Can we all rise for our prayer by Councilman Ludwig?
Good evening. Prayer to forgive wrongs. Heavenly Father, this is the day you have made. We will rejoice and are glad to be in it. Father, you hold the key to every heart on earth. We do not. Judgment for others is not in our hands. As we seek you more and more each day, in prayer and in your word, please show us how to be forgiving. In your Son cleanse us with our tendency to keep records, cleanse us from our records, our tendency to keep records of wrongs and reasons for blame. Let us not shame others, but show them how to be free through Christ. I humbly ask for all of our lives to reflect your brightness, your grace and your love. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We can't do that again. Okay, next, can we have roll call, please?
Councilor Ludwig.
Here.
Councilor Mangini. She's here. Councilor Nasuda.
Here.
Mayor Nelson.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Pisner.
Here.
Councilor Russo.
Here.
Councilor Santinella.
Here.
Councilor Ungeyer.
Here.
Councilor Sacala.
Here.
Councilor Krsati.
Here.
Councilor Hendrickson.
Here.
Eleven members are present and none are absent.
Thank you, Sheila. In the event of a fire, please exit the rear of the chambers a safe distance away from the building or go out the side doors here down one flight of stairs and out the rear doors a safe distance away from the building. Next, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes for the special meeting of February 18th, 2025. Second, motion is being seconded. Any comments, corrections or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Abstentions. One abstention. And next is the regular meeting of February 18th, 2025. Motion is being seconded. Any comments, corrections or concerns? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? And one abstention. Thank you. And tonight, we have a special guest for Municipal Redevelopment Authority, known as MRDA, and David Corus, the executive director, will come and explain. Welcome.
Mayor, I'll just start out for just a second. Aaron Markovich, Director of Economic and Community Development. In one of the requests for my role, you've asked me to look for dollars that we can use for this community to improve areas of the community, particularly around the project with the train station. Continue to dig and dig for those kinds of dollars. And there is an opportunity within the state that was established that is called the Connecticut Municipal Redevelopment Authority, which is a quasi-public state agency established to stimulate economic growth and promote transit-oriented development with a particular focus on increasing housing availability near public transportation hubs. Primary objectives is to assist municipalities in creating vibrant, multi-dimensional downtowns that attract businesses and residents alike. And as mentioned, the director of the program, David Corus, is here and he will be able to give you a little bit of background and answer questions with the intention that this leads towards a public hearing requirement before adoption of said program, if you're interested in doing so. So I'll turn it over to David.
Great. Thank you, Aaron. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you all for the opportunity to come here today. My purpose tonight is just to tell you a bit about what MRDA is and answer any questions you have to determine whether or not it's a program that Enfield would want to avail itself of. So we were established in statute. We are a quasi-public authority. We're governed by a board, which includes both legislative and gubernatorial appointees. We're funded with a capital allocation of $60 million presently that is slated to rise to 90 during the current budget. And we can allocate those funds to projects of different types with a focus on transit-oriented development. So mixed-use development around a train station or a bus rapid transit station, downtown redevelopment, including housing, building demolition or rehabilitation, or really anything that comes under the auspice of development or redevelopment, as long as it's near a train station, near a bus rapid transit station or in a downtown. The beauty of this program is it is exclusively opt-in. It is a voluntary program that municipalities can determine that they want to be members of. And basically, it's a four-step process. And I'll make it as simple as I can so that we can get to questions. So first and foremost, it's an action of the local legislative body following a public hearing to join our organization. And really, what that is, is just a signal that there's enough executive branch, legislative branch and public support for us to dedicate time and energy and resources to rolling up our sleeves and starting to work with you. For those municipalities who opt in, we then take a look at your zoning, but only in the localized areas within a half a mile of your planned train station or in the downtown. And we determine whether or not the zoning will likely facilitate a substantial increase of housing. Substantial is not defined in statute. We don't have an arbitrary density threshold where we require that you have to do a certain amount of units per acre or a certain building height. We're going to work to make sure that we're tailoring, you know, our review of your zoning to your local conditions. Because substantial means something very different in Enfield versus Hartford versus Rocky Hill, where I was earlier today. We may come back and we may sign off on your zoning as-is. I know you have transit-oriented development zoning around the train station. We may just check that box. Or we may come back with some recommendations. We may come back with some advice about how to tweak your zoning to make it more likely to produce the kind of housing that you're looking to achieve. In that instance, if we come back and say, "We recommend you do X, Y and Z to your zoning", you can say, "No, thank you", at which point, our relationship is essentially over. Or you can decide to make those changes with your staff or you can lean on us. And you could say, "We're open to making these changes, but we want some technical support." And we have a deep bench of consultants that can help with drafting zoning, help with visualizations or other mechanisms or means to better understand the impacts of that zoning, fiscal impact analysis or other ways to understand the tax implications of the types of development that the zoning would enable. Once we get to zoning that we have certified, whether it already exists or we've worked with you to amend it, we would then enter into an MOU with the chief elected official to establish the parameters of the development district, to put the line on the map and any other aspects of our relationship, which will vary, community by community. Once those lines are on the map, then the municipality can apply to us for infrastructure support. Developers working in accordance with that zoning can apply to us for gap financing. And again, as long as it's within the categories of transit-oriented development, housing, building demolition or rehabilitation or development or redevelopment, we can entertain those project funding applications. We're also, because 90 million is a lot of money, but certainly not the biggest player in various governmental resources, we're trying to find ways to add value in other ways. And the two main ways that we're going to do that are by helping to market sites and help do some matchmaking for good development partners with municipalities to help you realize your objectives, but also to support on state permitting. We're going to work really hard with our board that includes members from the Department of Transportation, from the Commissioner's Office, Energy and Environmental Protection, to make sure that we can say that when municipalities have raised their hand, when they want to grow in the places that are appropriate for their community around their train station or in their downtown and they've made the local zoning choices to do so, well, we're going to help by facilitating state permitting so that together, we can tell the market that we've made it as easy as possible to invest in these areas and to be the private sector partner to help you realize your goals. I know that was a lot. It was quick. But I want to make sure that I leave time for questions and answer anything that you may have about the program.
Good. Thank you for the explanation. Questions? Bob?
Thank you for coming. Thank you for the explanation. Where did the 60 million, 90 million come from?
Yeah. It's state bond authorization.
State bond.
Yeah.
Okay. And what kind of control is the town going to give up to be part of this? Nothing?
Zero. Yeah. So, you know, first and foremost, just by joining, you don't do anything. That's just a signal to make sure that we can allocate our resources. We could potentially partner with 161 of the 169 municipalities. So it's a way to start to kind of home our resources in on those places that have raised their hand. When we get to zoning, again, that is 100% within local control. We don't override local zoning. We can't force planning and zoning to do anything you don't want to. That remains 100% local control. When we get to the MOU, right, there may be aspects of that agreement. Just to throw out an example, we may say, "When we invest in infrastructure within this development district, we're going to have a 70/30 cost share with the municipality." Right? So there may be arrangements like that, but those will all be yours to vet and decide via the mayor's authorization and you do not give up any local control or authority. We come with carrots only, no sticks.
All right. No cost to be a member?
No.
Just get in. And getting out is just as easy?
Yeah. So, you know, if you don't have zoning that we ultimately certify, then you're not in. If you ultimately change that zoning, then you would be out because the zoning no longer exists. As long as you have the zoning in place that is aligned with our objectives, you know, getting out just means you're no longer gaining access to our funds. So, sure.
All right. Thank you very much.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you for coming. And I think you've just honed on, I guess, where I have a concern. So what would be a recommendation of your zoning, as you mentioned in your presentation? What would you recommend?
Yeah. So, I mean, I can't say in the generic, but we will look at things like parking ratios. We'll look at things like setbacks. And we may not have any changes, but working with, you know, our experience on development, working with our consultants, we may say, "Listen, your zoning says you want to achieve housing above retail within walking distance of the station. That's never going to happen because of this coverage percentage requirement. We recommend reducing it or increasing it from 75 to 85%. We think you'll have a much better shot getting the kind of development that you're looking for."
And the funding is dependent upon that recommendation, as you had explained.
Correct. Correct. Ultimately, if we have recommendations... Yeah. And if you don't want to make those zoning changes, you don't have to.
Yeah. Again, I appreciate what you're doing, but I prefer not to give up our local zoning. And again, I think we're already zoned appropriately. You know, we've had a train station prior to it leaving and it coming back. And, you know, for me, I'd rather... I appreciate it, but I think the zoning is a little concerning for me.
Thank you, Mike. Councilman Mangini.
Thank you. Thank you for your presentation, for your time. You did mention there are four steps. Obviously, the first being the public hearing. Now, once that passes, looking at the resolution, it's a little bit long. There's also mention of an MOU.
Correct.
Now, we would, I speak for myself, but I believe we would want our town attorney to be involved in any MOUs.
Of course.
You know, that the town would engage. And it looks as though the script is a form that you're using for most municipalities.
The opt-in resolution is a template that all municipalities are using. Yes.
I think it probably would be a great opportunity for Enfield. I just wanted to get some of those questions cleared up.
Yeah. Yeah. So the opt-in resolution, which is the first step, is a template that all municipalities are reviewing at this time who are contemplating opting in. And just to give you a sense, we have, I think as of today, we have 30 municipalities considering it and five have formally opted in. And they're all over the state. They're all different sizes. They have a lot of various different characteristics. But I would expect that your, you know, council would want to take a look at the MOU before you enter into it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Good evening. I did look at your presentation that was given to us through the state legislature.
Yep, at the Commerce Committee.
Your presentation at the state Capitol. You know, thanks for, you know, coming here. Thanks for the information that you had given us in regard to, you know, your proposal. Now, you know, the financing, obviously, is through bonding. Okay, so my point is the zoning, it would be recommendations, not that you would be coming in and changing anything. So you're making recommendations with the zoning through what, housing, whether it's fair market or affordable, any of that type of information. Now, what's your relationship with CROG?
Yeah.
Is it separate? Or is it still working within those parameters?
Sure. So, a few things there. First and foremost, you mentioned sort of the types of housing. I want to be clear, we do not come with an affordability restriction. So we can support market rate housing. We can support workforce housing. We can support affordable housing. Unlike many of the state funding programs, we do not come with an affordability requirement. In terms of the zoning, I have not taken the time to delve into your zoning. We don't do that until a municipality opts in. We very well may look at your zoning and say, "You're there", in which case, we would have no recommendations. Correct. We may have recommendations. And if we have recommendations, it is completely within the municipality's own determination whether or not you adopt those recommendations. In terms of our relationship with CROG, we are completely distinct from CROG. We do work with the councils of government, but we are a totally separate quasi-public entity.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you. I think this is a very good program that you are offering to municipalities. And I hope that we take a look at this and give you the opportunity for a public hearing. Thank you. Thank you, Bob. Anybody else? Marie?
Kenny? Kenny, I had a question.
I called you.
Oh, okay. Thank you. So there was two things. I did a little bit of research. If I heard you right, you're only looking within a half a mile of the transit area? Is that correct?
We are statutorily limited to either within a half a mile of the planned train station or within a downtown. And so there could be elements of the community that have mixed-use, walkability, orientation along a main street. And I will note that we've had some conversation amongst the board about some communities, and I think you might find this relevant, where you have a declining shopping center or similar large parcel where the intent might be to evolve it into more of a mixed-use, walkable sort of downtown. And our board has demonstrated an interest in helping those communities, even if it might be an area where we might not call it a downtown today, but it might be on the path to evolving towards a downtown, that that is something that could apply. So that's a long way of saying within a half a mile of the train station or in a place that is or might evolve into be a, what we would call a downtown.
Okay. And my next question is, if I read correctly, again, I did a little bit of research, you also are there to help developers offering low-interest loans? So how are you partnering with developers?
Correct. So our funding, again, can be used for transit-oriented development, housing, building demolition or rehabilitation or development or redevelopment. And so within those categories, it may be infrastructure support for which a municipality may apply or a developer might. Or it could be direct support to a developer. We will make sure that they are maximizing debt and equity from other sources and then we could provide low-interest gap financing. But that developer would have to be building in compliance with your zoning in order to work with us. We can't pick a developer and endorse them doing something that isn't in compliance with your local regulations.
Okay. So once again, if we opt in and then we end up, you give us some advice and we disagree with it, there's nothing that keeps us from opting out, correct?
Done at that point. Correct. You just, you don't make it to the MOU stage.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Councilman Santinella.
Thanks. Thank you, David. Good to see you again. So just, I just want to hone in on sort of the half-mile radius and kind of what that means, right? So the train station is that way.
Yep.
But if we wanted to drop the pin, say, on this building, right, then the radius moves over a little bit and captures another, more land that way, right? So it's all where you put that center point? Or does it have to be at the train station?
So the center point for the half a mile has to be at the train station. But how we define the downtown can go beyond that.
So we have a unique situation because the half a mile on the west is water and another town.
Correct.
Right? So doesn't that kind of put us at some sort of disadvantage? Because we only, we're not getting a full half-mile radius. We're getting...
Yeah. I mean, that's just kind of how it is.
Okay. Mother nature. Right. Okay.
If you were to draw a half a mile, it's 500 acres.
Yep.
Some towns with a train station have the full 500 acres.
And some don't. So, and it doesn't just... So if anybody from Suffield is looking, this doesn't carry over to other municipalities, right? We're not going to go encroach on them.
No, no. By opting in, you wouldn't trigger...
That question has been asked. So just want to make sure that, you know, we're not encroaching on Suffield. Okay. Thank you very much.
John, we might want to put in documeniums. Would that qualify, David and Marina, in it? Because we do have development. And I'm being comical, but if I might just interject at this point before the mayor closes us out, I would just like to say, we should all recollect. I know we are cognizant, especially today, more than ever, strings attached, you know, with government programs. However, I would like to remind, we wouldn't even be considering this if the state hadn't deigned to give us between 35 and 50 million dollars for our train station with no strings attached. So let's start there. Number two, we had nationally this summer, David, I don't know if Aaron shared with you, we had national planners come here for several days to look at the future of Thompsonville. They're going to come to our next meeting and give a full report as special guests. I think that ties into this. We are currently rewriting all of our zoning rights, Lori Whitten and our staff. So I think this is a perfect time. There's no strings attached to get... They have experts on their dime to partner with us to look at this. I think it's a perfect project for us to embark on. I know we have two developers here this evening that are currently wanting to develop 33 North River Street. They've spoken to David. We've had discussions this evening about financing. Remember, several years ago, we had no tools to do this. I don't want to look a gift-tore person in the house. I want to be cognizant because we know the government. There's always a little catch and we'll let you know what they are. But we now have a TIF district with millions of dollars that we can utilize. We now have the ability to do credit enhancement agreements, tax abatements. No, they're not popular, but the state keeps on expanding them because they know, "We're not competing with Windsor. We're competing with North Carolina." So we have these tools. So I would just say, why would we not vote to just have the public hearing? Next time, we'll hear from those planners coming from across the country. I think we actually, because we're a transit district, I can't really imagine they're going to impose too many things on us that we don't want to do ourselves. We want mixed-use. We want apartments. We're striving towards all of this. Aaron has spoken to David. David, I did share with all of the council your presentation at the legislature. Thanks to Mr. Santinella. Tomorrow, I'm going to put that up on our manager Facebook so people can look for themselves. This meeting will be amenable. But I would say, in this case, you know, the state has been a good partner. And if this is something we can work cohesively... And again, I love it. Marie, you were right. If we're out, if we don't want to make the changes, we're out. But if we've already made them or they don't have any suggestions, is there a reason we wouldn't want to accept millions of dollars to enhance the area around the train? I would think we already made that decision when we green-lighted the track down there. So that's my two cents. I would ask that you support the public hearing for next time. And then let's hear from our planners. We'll hear from the public on this. And then you can make your decision. But I think it would be imprudent not to consider it.
Okay. Well, I just have one pretty critical question is, if we do accept and agree to join with you and everything works, we agree, the zoning, we're all on the same page, at what point would we be able to start tapping into the resources? Because along with what Mr. Bronson just said, we do have developers sitting here right now. And, you know, they're hoping to tap, break ground, you know, six, eight months. And, I mean, this could be something that could definitely benefit them. And it's the closest property to the train station. But with the train station not being built till, I believe, 2028 or '07, could we utilize this for this particular project?
Yeah. So the short answer is yes. The fact that the station is planned is enough for the eligibility. You know, realistically, if you were to opt in following a public hearing in the next, you know, month or so, you know, I think we could probably be in a position to entertain funding applications in June or July, right? That's, you know, that's a little aggressive, but that's the general timeframe that I think we're working on with the municipalities as they join.
Well, we're willing to be your test subjects if you can help these gentlemen out. So, again, I see nothing wrong with it at this point, especially going to a public hearing. Let's see what the public input is Let's see what the public input is and, you know, our planning department. And I would ask that we invite the entire Planning and Zoning Commission to come and speak at the public hearing also. And, yeah, I will be supporting to put this on the agenda for our next council meeting. Because again, I mean, we're at the forefront of this with a great developer ready to go. So, you know, let's work together and see what we can't do to make it happen. I want to thank you for taking the time and coming in.
Yeah, thanks for having me. Thanks for all the questions.
All right, thank you. Will you be here at the public hearing?
What would be the date?
Two Mondays from tonight.
Yeah, so I'm at the stage where, I'm at the stage where a lot of the municipal stuff is starting to overlap. So, if I can't be here in person, I would join via Zoom or find some way to participate for at least part of it.
All right, just if they have questions.
Yeah, absolutely.
Just tell the other towns that, you know, your number-one priority is on the agenda.
Get it on the calendar first, and then everyone else will be responding to it.
All right, thank you very much. Have a great night.
Thanks, you too.
Okay, moving on. Public communications and petitions. Any person who wishes to address the council shall first be recognized by the chair and shall state their name and address for the record. They shall limit their remarks to five minutes. After each person who desires has had the chance to speak, those desiring to speak a second time will be permitted to do so and shall limit their remarks to three minutes. During public communications, item seven on the agenda, public members shall limit their remarks to two rounds totaling eight minutes. During public communications, item 16 on the agenda prior to 11:00 p.m., each person shall limit their remarks to three minutes. Public communication shall be limited to one hour unless extended by a majority vote of the council. All remarks shall be addressed to the council as a whole and not any individual member. All remarks addressed to the administration of the town shall be addressed to the town manager and not to an individual employee. Public members shall observe proper decorum and good conduct and shall refrain from personalities and improper language. Who would like to come up and speak to the council? Ma'am?
Good evening. Wendy Osada, 8 Windmill Road, Enfield. So, I'm here tonight on behalf of the Enfield Greater Together Community Fund. I am currently a member of the advisory committee. We design and lead an inclusive process to identify the needs of our community and oversee a grant-making process aimed to ensure that the Greater Together Community Funds can have the greatest impact for the benefit of Enfield residents. In our 2024 grant cycles, we awarded over $30,000 to Enfield nonprofits. But in order to continue to do so, I am using this forum to both offer and ask for support from Enfield residents. So, first, to offer support, the committee will soon be kicking off another grant-making cycle. The maximum grant award is $5,000. To be eligible for a grant, grants must be utilized to benefit the community of Enfield. Organizations applying must be a nonprofit that are exempt under a 501(c)(3) or organizations that are not classified as a 501(c)(3) may use a fiscal sponsor that is. So, that's the offer. To ask for support, the advisory committee is currently seeking new committee members. The committee plays a lead role in deciding how Enfield's Greater Together Community Funds will be used. The meetings are held the second Thursday evening of each month. So, I'm asking the Enfield residents to please consider joining this exciting and very rewarding committee. Enfield residents who do not hold a town-elected position are eligible to apply, including students or young adults ages 14 and over. This could be a great community service opportunity. If it still works the same way, when I had kids in high school, they had to have community service hours for, like, the National Honor Society, I believe. So, if we don't have enough committee members, we can't continue to award grants that benefit the town. To either apply for a grant or for a position on the advisory committee, please search online for the Enfield Greater Together Community Fund. Be careful, there is also a very similar organization based in England with the same name. So, make sure you have the one in the United States. And if you would like, I have some, the name of our organization printed out, and I can also give that to you with my contact information and my name in case you have any questions. So, thank you for your time. Please consider applying for a grant or serving on the committee if eligible.
Well, thank you very much, Wendy.
Thank you.
Next, George.
Thank you. Good evening, council. I just have a few questions tonight. But first, I want to thank the assessors' office for explaining why my car will be so high in July when I pay the taxes. It was an excellent explanation of why. So, that I'd like to thank them for. I was expecting a resolution tonight regarding the senior volunteer tax credit program. Since it isn't here, should we expect a next council meeting? As many seniors would like to know the status this year, especially about their hours needed to qualify. Thank you. In tonight's resolution to transfer funds for the WPCF fuel tank replacement project, my question is, why would there be excess salaries and health insurance of $150,000 in the WPC? Did we over-budget, or was WPC unable to hire someone they needed? Could someone explain that? And what should we expect for this coming year? There's another resolution to transfer funds of $838,000, which seems to be only part one of a $1.6 million project to remove and install new tanks. Next year, will you be transferring more money from unused funds? This amount of money is the maximum allowed for a project in the current year, according to the charter, based on the gross valuation for the town of $4.19 billion versus the net valuation, which would be about $100,000 less funds that is transferable. Why isn't this project going to referendum in November since it is a, it is one project over the $838,000, and the tanks need to be removed before November of 2026? Also, is the Eldon Avenue gym project a dead issue? And I know you probably talked about it earlier. Or will the council try to revive it this year? Or, I mean, next year? Same question for the B&amp;G Garage. I'm hoping for some transparency here from either the council or the DPW through the town manager. I tried to have the Charter Revision Commission change the maximum the council could spend on a capital project in one year by using net valuation versus gross valuation. I don't think they really considered reducing the minimum, the maximum they could spend without a referendum. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, George. Ma'am?
Good evening. My name is Jessica Soul. I live at 10 Brook Road in Enfield. I'm here tonight to share some of my perspective as a special educator in our district. I work in a self-contained program here in town, and I want to share the perspective of the work that my paras and my BTs do. The paraprofessionals and behavior techs who work within my own special education students are the backbone of the effective special education program. Their contributions cannot be overstated. They provide one-on-one support that helps students access the curriculum and participate in all classroom activities. They offer behavioral support to develop self-regulation skills and reduce disruptions. They foster communication between my students, their teachers, their peers, and other staff. Often, my paras become experts in an individual student's unique communication style. They collect data on student progress and behavior patterns for IEP planning, adapt materials, and implement modifications to ensure access to the content. They assist with daily living skills while maintaining the dignity of said students and promoting their independence. They build trusting relationships with student, students who struggle socially and provide emotional security for them. Despite these invaluable contributions, paras in our district are underpaid compared to surrounding towns, and in my opinion, undervalued. This can lead to high turnover rates and staffing shortages that will impact the quality and consistency of the education of the special-needs students. This means that some of our most vulnerable students, those who struggle the most with transitions and new relationships, constantly adjust to new support personnel, disrupting their learning and their emotional security. To switch gears to talk about my behavior techs, they provide specialized support in the classroom. They follow a carefully-designed plan, behavior plan, that has been proven to work, ensuring that students receive consistent support. They also collect information about, specifically about student behaviors that show us what's working and what to make better so we can make better decisions during our PPT meetings. They apply specialized behavior strategies to help students overcome challenging behaviors. They use structured methods to reward the good behaviors while reducing the behaviors that get in the way of learning. They document the behavioral incidents and interventions to track progress towards IEP goals and coordinate with teachers and the BCBA in our district to ensure that everyone uses the same approach with our students. They identify antecedents and consequences to understand student behavior triggers, provide extra support during transitions and less structured activities when students can struggle the most. And most, one of the most important things that they do is prevent and manage crises. They use specialized training to calm situations before they escalate and successfully manage and de-escalate very difficult moments. These specialized skills make BTs particularly valuable in the special education setting as they bring their targeted expertise in behavior management that benefits individual students and our classrooms as a whole. Investing in the special education programs and the professionals who implement them is not merely a financial decision, but a moral one that must reflect our community's values. Students with special needs deserve the same opportunities for success as their peers, and this can only happen with proper funding and well-supported staff. In closing, I work hard in my classroom not to make decisions solely based on my emotions. However, tonight, I urge the members of the town council and our community to consider the potential future needs of your own children and potentially grandchildren in our schools and how the impact of those decisions could affect their lives moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica. Next, sir.
Hi, I'm Mike Rinaldi from 12 Martin Terrace. I just wanted to talk about the, the new business of the resolution to change the road alignment and sidewalk on Martin Terrace. I'm not sure what's new business versus the old business that was being discussed prior. But I saw that there was, on the website, a, a document that showed three different options. One being the original that we were speaking about, which makes the most sense. It's already been designed and engineered, and I wouldn't want to lose the time that went into that to have to redesign something. Now, I think the second and third option that they're presenting, it seems they're just kind of a hail mary pass. They don't seem to work as the original does. Putting the sidewalk on the opposite actually would force the road to become straightened rather than be able to bank to the side and slow traffic down. That's an issue. And then, with the sidewalk where they proposed on option one, it allows the plows to dump a good amount of snow on the pad of property as the road turns. That's, that's a solid option there as well. Option three, it's even more of a hail mary pass in my mind. It looks like it's just to narrow the road that's already narrow and then add sidewalks to both sides, and then only a three-foot snow shelf on either side. It's just, it's, it's doing the minimal it can to achieve something that it's not going to achieve. What's going to happen, I mean, three feet is the width of one of those doors there. A plow, just the last storm, I had seven feet of swale up my driveway. So, a plow would cover that snow shelf as well as the sidewalk. And then, those sidewalks become neglected. And at that point, it makes it even more of an unsafe walking area where we're trying to create a safer walking area. They also said there's, there's no impact to the budget, but doing sidewalks on both sides, relocating utility poles, redesigning catch basins, using twice as much gravel and concrete to make two sidewalks, that seems to be twice as much cost that really needs to happen. Last time, we had mentioned some simple tweaks that could be achieved to increase safety for students walking. People speeding down the road, we talked about speed bumps or speed tables, something even halfway down the road where it could be a crosswalk even. So, if the sidewalk stays on one side and then crosses, it allows people on both sides of the street to have some sort of, of walk. But it was not mentioned in either of, or any of these three options. So, that's a shame. It just seems like a very simple fix, along with some signage, more prominent signage as far as the one-way traffic, which could also be stamped onto these speed bumps. So, I think as you consider this for the, the resolution tonight, I just wanted to put my thoughts out there and say, option one seems to be the strongest one. I still think we can do some safety tweaks with minimal impact as far as speed bumps. Speed tables are a little bit better as far as plowing, rather than, than harsh bumps and whatnot. It does tend to slow traffic down. And the option one, in my mind, has the benefit of having that road continue to curve and enhance that curve to slow traffic down. So, those are my thoughts. Hope it helps.
All right, thank you, Mike. Ma'am?
My name is Margaret Gandassi from 31 Frew Terrace. I'd like to start by thanking, thanking you by starting to say that I appreciate the work that you do and the effort that you do for the town council on behalf of the Enfield. And given the current political climate in the United States, I'm sure this work will continue to be even more challenging. I have a few comments and one question. So, my first, my question is, why is there prayer included in a government meeting? It seems, it doesn't seem to go along with, with church and state separations. And then, the comments that I have is, diversity, equity, and inclusion committee has been called ineffective. And we are a diverse population. We're all different, not necessarily treated equally. There should be a continuing effort on this front. If one committee did not work, perhaps another will. So, for instance, if you have an ineffective fire department, you replace it. You don't just throw away with it. And then, another comment, I heard the news this week, was the Black Lives Matter flags are not, they're not anti-police. They're reminding people that black lives have not mattered, and there's not accountability for black lives taken. And it should be an awareness, much the same as gay, trans, or disability. And then, if something is not right, please say so. I guess I'm, I'm frightened by politicians not saying when something's wrong. And I'm seeing it not at this government necessarily, but at the higher level. And I think we're all a little bit apprehensive about the future. And I think I'd like to be at least listening to you and making sure that we're doing the right thing in our town. And then, that will roll up to our bigger government. So, that's all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Margaret. Anyone else? Ma'am?
Good evening, good evening. My name's Christina Doughty, and I live at 74 Steel Road. I am here today as a parent, alumni, resident, and concerned human being. This is my second time speaking to you in the past year. As elected representatives of the town, it is your responsibility to do your very best to secure the future success and well-being of our town. It's your solemn responsibility to listen, learn, care, and think about what the good, hard-working people of our town are saying. We're not asking you to change the color of the sky. We're not asking you to give up your favorite food. We are asking you to do your duty and secure the future of Enfield, Connecticut by fully funding our schools, educators, and children. We are looking to our leaders for proposals and solutions so that we can start rebuilding and repairing the damage done by this budget deficit. As students, we pour our hearts and souls into learning, growing, and getting better as people. I'm very proud and very grateful to see the students in Enfield Public Schools continuing to fight passionately for their right to a great education. An educated society benefits all of us. I vividly remember being a student in Enfield Public Schools. I remember being grateful and excited for my AP classes, my early college education credits at Isnun Tuck, which boosted my application status at my top universities. I remember Voices Incorporated, Barnes &amp; Noble Book Club, Community Service Club. I managed the JFK Cross Country Team, and I played varsity tennis in high school as a freshman. I attended pep rallies. I participated in the Connecticut-Spain Partnership, traveling to Seville with Senora Dalpe. Each and every one of the sports, extracurriculars, and academic programs I had in the Enfield Public School system made me the successful adult I am today. All throughout New England, people recognized Enfield from our hockey program and the twin rinks. These passions and hobbies began in JFK, and most of them no longer exist today. This is disrespectful to our students and the residents who worked so very hard to keep the future of Enfield, Connecticut alight with excellency. Every single tax-paying resident in this town deserves to have a fully-funded school system for their children, grandchildren, neighbors, and friends to grow up in. The teachers, aides administrative professionals, medical professionals, custodians, students, all deserve a quality education and safe, efficient work environment. This is only possible with a fully-funded budget and adequate staff. Withholding critical resources is unacceptable going forward. As parents, we calculate every move we make to prioritize the well-being of our children and family. The budget decimation from last year is taking a severe and destructive toll on all of our children. I'm personally witnessing this. As well as the quality of our education and mental health of our Enfield students decline. Watching a second grader go from a happy-go-lucky and thriving student to a student struggling with bullies who doesn't want to go to school is devastating. Please make no mistake, this is a direct result of lack of funding. Our staff and administrators are doing an excellent job addressing these issues despite their severe lack of resources. However, the rainy day is today. We are deeply missing the 127 caring staff members this school system lost, we as a community lost. Our remaining teachers are out here fighting for their lives and the lives of every single student that they teach. It is disrespectful to demand that these same educators who dedicate their entire lives to helping our children increase their class sizes by five or more. Only teachers would be forced to take on an expanded role for no additional pay or resources. They oblige because they care about the well-being of our children, the town, and our collective futures. This is not a partisan issue. The Enfield Public Schools need a complete fiscal backing. This is a worthy investment. Regardless of your age or personal association with the school system, a fully-funded education budget is crucial to the well-being of our town as a whole. Whether you have children in the school system or not, an educated society benefits all of us. Thank you.
That was perfect timing. You worked on that. Anyone else? Ma'am?
Melanie Culpecksah, 200 North Maple Street. I am here tonight to discuss the school budget. I know it isn't time for you to vote on that yet, but as town leaders, I'm sure you've been monitoring this issue. Some school accomplishments listed by the superintendent are, Enfield Public School students have made marked gains in English, language arts, science, and math. In fact, on NGSS science and SAT math testing, Enfield students scored above state average. For the class of 2024, 76% of students went on to further their education, with over 22% of them attending highly-competitive institutions. 22% of them attending highly competitive institutions. These data points will likely take a deep dive unless we take steps to fund what our schools need in order to present quality candidates to higher education, the workforce, and our military. We must fund our schools in a way that will not let Enfield fall behind, especially after we recently made such great strides. Years ago, when my father was in his 80s, I asked him how he felt about his tax dollars paying for public schools when he didn't have any children or grandchildren attending them. He said he was happy to pay because those kids were going to grow up and run this country. He said, "They are our future, and we need to give them a good foundation." This was a man who grew up poor, started working at age 12, and used words like thrifty and parsimonious to describe himself. He was also a staunch Republican. As a Republican myself, I understand the need to spend money carefully. I also understand that our children are the future of this town, this state, and of our country. I fear that if schools continue to be underfunded, our town will suffer. Families will leave, property values will decrease, and the town will no longer be attractive to businesses. For these reasons, I ask you to please fully fund the Board of Education's approved budget when the time comes. Our students, our families, and our community deserve your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Melanie. Anyone else? Sir?
Greg Sherrins, 19 Sam Street. First, before I get started, I would like to also echo that we definitely need to invest more into our paras. As a teacher, I can tell you that they are incredibly valuable and just across the board, across this country. I think we're not giving them enough attention or support. That's not the reason I came here tonight. I came here tonight because I am frankly tired of seeing our town's name get dragged through the mud because our mayor cannot stop saying the most ignorant things, and I come here to question who he is here to serve. It's clear it's not minorities in this town. The mayor denounced DEI despite being incredibly ignorant of what that actually means. No, Mr. Mayor, unqualified black people aren't taking jobs away from white people. People still have to meet the same requirements as anybody else. But we certainly have a lack of black teachers and staff at our schools, and with your comments, it doesn't seem like it's a very friendly town for them to work in. As if to double down on your clear ignorance, you said that Black Lives Matter flags are anti-cop during Black History Month.
Mr. Mayor, point of order, please. Mr. Sherman, we need to refrain from personalities. It's not the decorum of this room.
Then he should stop calling out individual teachers, too.
If it matters, John, I appreciate that, but I'm okay with it. I made the comments and let the people see exactly what we're dealing with.
Hold on. I'm sorry. It's my point of order. And, okay.
Fine, then I'll take out personalities, but boy, howdy, it'd be sure nice if we stopped being in the news for negative reasons. We need to actually start being here to serve all of Enfield, everybody. We need to make sure that in our official capacities, we are not denouncing things that are actually here to help other people, like calling the BOE an embarrassment. That's kind of embarrassing for me, as somebody that works here in this town and also lives here and pays my taxes here. These are not the things that should be happening here at all. If we want families to move in, our language needs to be a little bit more friendly when it comes to people of other groups. So like, yeah, Black Lives Matter, not anti-cop. In fact, I would say the opposite is true, considering the long history in this country of the police system being incredibly anti-black. Like, you can look at the numbers and stuff like that. If you want to be a good governing body, you should be looking into that data and stuff like that and making sure that we are actually serving all the groups here. So I think the real thing comes down to now, if we're trying to look at the national level, we are starting to see white supremacy pop up all over the place. I mean, hell, Elon Musk threw out the Nazi salute. So we really start to need to ask ourselves, are we going to accept this? Because that stuff is going to come down to Enfield. And if we keep doing these dog whistles, that stuff's gonna like basically come through here, and there's not gonna be any problem, and it's not gonna have any resistance. I am here to serve my community. I am here to serve my students. I do not appreciate that any of them be belittled for who they are as their identity, because there isn't a flag in any way that is going to get any kind of pushback that represents white people. But we seem to keep politicizing people's identities, and I don't, I don't understand that. It seems pretty gross. So, I don't know, I guess, Happy Women's History Month. Hopefully, we can get through a month without anybody saying anything incredibly ignorant about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? For the second time? Seeing none? Councilman Communications. John, would you like to go?
Thank you. I had one, one thing. Earlier this week, the Culture and Arts Commission hosted an event called Art Squash at the Thompson Hall, which is the former Polish home. It was a very strange title for an event. However, I went, and it was their kickoff, and it's a very intriguing artistic interpretation of squash. And the artists are going to go and work up their interpretations of that theme and put on a display at the Thompson Hall later in the year. And so I would encourage anyone with any artistic talent whatsoever, or interested, to reach out to the Culture and Arts Commission. I am not one of those people. But please join in the fun, because I think it is going to be a wonderful event, and restaurants in the community donated food. There was a presentation, and I think it's just gonna bring a little bit of culture, or more culture into Thompsonville. So, Councilor Ungary, I know you are the one with the artistic talent here, so maybe you should sign up. Beyond that, I just have one comment. I've said this before, and I'll say it again. I will not bet against our kids, not today, not tomorrow, not ever, and I am committed to doing whatever I can to give them a good education. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Gina?
I don't have any specific comments, just thanking the speakers tonight. And rest assured, we will continue to try to find ways to fund the BOE at their ask. That is what I want to do, at a minimum. I would even entertain giving them more than they asked. But I am hoping that we get consensus up here for at least what the Board of Ed asked for in their budget presentation.
All set. Thank you. Bob?
Yes. I have a few things that I'm gonna be discussing here tonight. First of all, getting to what Counselor Santinella had brought up with the squash over at the cultural arts at Thompson Hall. I know that my son, who is an artist at the Art Connection Studio, did attend and will be partaking in that, in that event. And, you know, to even think of an opportunity to have creative work with squash is quite intriguing to me, you know, to walk into seeing a bunch of squash, you know, around, around the facility, but looking forward to it. I did attend the Black History Month event at the Library of the Ujima Society. You know, once again, educating, inspiring, engaging in African-American culture here in the community. It was a great event. Chad and Melissa Woodard, they had this professor, her name was Femi Bogalaskay, who really gave a really quite intriguing explanation of her own attitudes and how she looks at racism. And it was very good. And also, Nazima Hutchins was there, our poet laureate. There is another event that is gonna be taking place. It's Healing Through the Arts, once again, through the Ujima Society, which is March 15th, and it's, it's a Let's Talk event. So if you're interested in attending, please go. Also, congratulations to the Enfield Stars. Special Olympics this past weekend was the Winter Games, and congratulations to all the athletes that took part in this. And, you know, there was events held, really throughout the state, but the Enfield Stars participated in the EverSource snow shoeing and cross-country skiing events. So it was a nice weekend for them. Also, today, along with a few of us, was Read Across America. We did get invited to Stowe Early Learning Center. Boy, I know they put me in a classroom today, and I asked them if they did this on purpose, knowing that I'm gonna be a grandfather in another month, you know, being with the one-year-olds again. So I had to sharpen up my skills pretty quick with the youngsters. But, you know, we did read a few Dr. Seuss books. It was fun. It was, it was a great, great event. And, you know, once again, we're there to celebrate, encourage children to read and to interact, you know, and even get, you know, build some sort of sense of community and some cultural awareness with, with everybody. I was pretty impressed with everybody that got up to speak. I could go through quite a few of you, but Marge, nice job of everything that you stated up there. People that came and talked about the budget and education, let me tell you, I am definitely for it. I did go to the Board of Ed. I did discuss stating that we should always ask for making our education system whole, and hopefully, we're going in the right direction towards that. George, I hope at the next council meeting, there is that resolution for the Senior Volunteer Tax Credit Program, which I thought was gonna be coming up soon. So, with that, you know, so thank you for bringing that up. Also, out in the audience, and I know it's gonna be part of one of our resolutions for the school modernization, and I'll wait for more comments to go along with that, but ask for additional funds. Randy, so I'm glad that you're here to discuss that, and I will put my two cents in as, as we move forward with the meeting. And one last thing that I'm gonna say. On Friday, March 14th, The Black Crow Coffee Shop is coming into Thompsonville, 8:00 in the morning. Go support it. Should, should be, you know, a nice added addition to Thompsonville, so, thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Councilman Mangini.
Thank you. I just want to remind everyone that March is Women's History Month. We have many, many great women that have come before us, that are currently around. I just wanted to highlight a couple. Eleanor Roosevelt, her passion for peace and social justice made her a significant person in her time, a woman especially. Her kindness, intelligence, and her advocacy and kindness helped shape many accomplishments that we have today. Rosa Parks is another esteemed woman, a black woman, who refused to give up her seat on the bus. She paved the way as well for black individuals and for women as well. And finally, I just want to touch base on Ruth Bader Ginsburg, who is one of our justices. She was nominated in 1993 by President Clinton, and she exerted on the court until her death. While serving, she continued to advocate for women's rights and gender equality, and she wrote an opinion on the United States versus Virginia, which ruled that qualified women could not be denied admission to military. And unfortunately, she died in 2020. But her legacy as a trailblazer continues, and we're very fortunate that we've had just a sampling of these tremendous women. So I wanted to bring that forward. And I also would like to mention, again, with Councilman Crisati, I did attend the, Crisati, I did attend the Ujima event, which was very enlightening, and I really enjoyed the presenter and the material that was there. Read Across America, I was there with Councilor Crisati and our lestrous mayor. I didn't know you could read. No, I had to say that. Had to say it. But we were together in the same room, and I read Green Eggs and Ham, which was twice the size of the book that you got, but we did a great job. I think the kids loved it. So that was fun. That was a lot of fun. And finally, I do want to reiterate, well, my colleagues have mentioned also about the Board of Education budget. Quite frankly, I don't think it's enough. I think by looking at the numbers and by looking at the history, they really need to come forward and say, "Look, this is what we need." Never mind, you know, well, could we have this, or we can get by with this. I want to see, this is what we need to run an efficient school system. That's what I'm looking for. And, and that is the direction that we should be going. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. Jim?
I just have some things. I'll wait till reports of committees.
Thank you. Jeff?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Marjorie spoke during Public Communications and said, "As politicians, if something is wrong, to say it, just say it out loud." Thank you, Marjorie. I'm gonna take that advice tonight. Mr. Sherrins, I'm glad you are here. My daughter has you as a teacher. She tells me that you know how to teach. She tells me that you're a really good teacher when you actually teach science. Remember, you were hired to be a science teacher. All year long, you've been imposing your personal beliefs, your social and political activism on your students. I think that was on full display tonight for everyone to see. I guess what you saw tonight, I guess what we saw tonight corroborates what the students are saying about what goes on in your science class. Is any of this appropriate for a science class? You're making your students in your class feel uncomfortable. Students don't want to come forward because they're afraid they will face retaliation. Also, because you've been allowed to operate in this manner all year, the students don't believe the school administration will back them. Don't you want to create a learning environment where all your students feel comfortable and can learn, or is being divisive and controversial more important to you? Can we stick to the science curriculum? Teach science. Is that too much to ask?
Thank you, Jeff. Councilman Ungary?
I just wanted to address something that Marge said. You mentioned about praying during our council meetings. Well, that's something we do on a national scale. They do it in Washington, they do it in Hartford, we do it here. Counselors everywhere do that, so it's not unusual. And we have freedom of religion, not from religion. I also have some other comments that I'm gonna wait until we have the report of special committees.
Thank you. Councilman Hendrickson?
Just a couple of things to lighten it up. I'm glad Counselor Crisati straightened out the squash question in my head. I'm thinking vegetable squash or the game of squash. Couldn't figure out where we were going. I thank you for the clarification on that.
That's why you're not an artist.
There you go, exactly. I did work with a lot of squash, though, so I do know that. The game of squash, I have no idea what it's all about. I also want to thank the mayor for getting back to me, and Donald Doones for getting back to me on Powder Hollow. And, and to High School, apparently that project's going well. Simon Road has been done, just some cleaning up around the edges on that. I'm glad to hear that also. And just on the senior tax credit, I do get a lot of questions about that, too, so I do think we should resolve that one way or the other sometime. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Councilman Lovett?
Good morning, Tom Manager. When is, can we maybe address the circuit breaker program? There's a deadline coming up, I believe, for, for folks to apply, and I think- There's a deadline coming up, I believe, for, for folks to apply, and I think they have to do it through the Community Development Office, I believe, right? So if someone could just remind when you, the date, I know it's coming up, so folks, you know, apply. And the same thing with the BAA, the appeals. I know, I think the deadline is mid-March, I believe, we, if we could just.
I'll ask John during my report just to confirm the dates.
Just so we're coming close to those, but I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it?
That's it.
Deputy Mayor Pisner.
Thank you. I, too, want to respond to Marge's question as far as a prayer that starts our meetings. A prayer is a form of unity. It brings us together as a council, and I stand behind us starting our meetings with prayer. The only other thing, Mayor, to the town manager, I'm hoping that maybe we could put the website on for the Greater Enfield Community Fund that Wendy was speaking about. I think it might be easier for folks to go onto our website if they're interested in volunteering or applying for one of those grants. So I'm hoping we could possibly do that. So, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Mangini.
Thank you. I forgot, thank you again, to make a mention of, I think, a very important valuable point. I am not an educator by any means. I have a law degree. However, I had the privilege, and I say this sincerely, a privilege, of working in the Enfield Public School, was it two school years ago? And I was an assistant, a tutor to third, fourth, fifth grade. There's no way a person who is not physically in that classroom can or should judge a teacher at all, because the teacher is doing his or her job, not only teaching and delivering material to the students, but that teacher is also doing his or her best to maintain control, to keep attention, and for any person, us included, to come forward and ostracize or criticize or question what a teacher may be doing in the classroom, in my opinion, is uncalled for. Thank you.
All set, Cindy? I agree with Deputy Mayor Pisner. If we could help Wendy get the information out about the grant program that she's running, I think it is fabulous for the community, and the more exposure it gets, it can only help people and the organization move forward. Mr. Young, the senior tax credit, why isn't it on the agenda? I had no idea it was supposed to be on the agenda. Last I knew, the liaisons were going to work with the commission on aging to find out and make some recommend, recommended adjustments to it before the council would even consider implementing the program back. But as of right now, we haven't received any of that, so I thought the program was done at that point. The $800,000 for the in-ground oil tanks, we moved it from in-ground oil tanks to Alden Avenue. Then when Alden Avenue didn't pan out, and we are not moving forward with it to answer that, we moved it to the pump station because the bid came in almost twice what we had anticipated for the project. The tanks have to get done. I mean, this is deep and everything, they expire in 2026, so we're moving the $800,000 back into the account. It is a multi-year project, just like a roof on a school or anything else, and we put money aside every year to build up, so we don't have to bond or borrow to do these projects. So that's why, and yes, I'm pretty sure next year, at budget time, which is several months away, you will see the remainder of the money allocated for those tanks, because we don't have a choice. They have to get done. The, the $100,000, if, when the town manager speaks, he can address that, but I personally, if it's coming out of salaries, it's coming out of vacant positions that we've had throughout the year in DPW. And like our two assistant deputy directors, both positions are empty right now, and they are high-paying salaries, especially if you add the benefit package. And it doesn't take long to add that up. So the next, why we have a prayer before our meetings? Because I believe in prayer. And that's what's great about this country. If you don't like it, you don't have to do it. But nobody has the right to tell any of us sitting up here that we cannot have a prayer to start a meeting, and every single council member has a choice whether they choose to do a prayer, or a moment of silence, or whatever they want. We take turns throughout the, the year, and I know personally, and several times, I've taken a moment of silence just to reflect on those that are no longer with us. And nobody's ever going to take that right from me, ever. And that's what's great about America. Mr. Shorins, I think Jeff said it all. I think Councilman Mangini is not in his class, doesn't have children in your class, and for you to try to indoctrinate our children with your personal beliefs is absolutely disgusting. And if, it has to change. Our children are supposed to be safe in a public building, being taught a curriculum approved by the Board of Education. And nowhere in the Board of Education does any of that meet, especially in a science class. So, Mr. Russo, I think you're spot on. I apologize to you and your family that your daughters have to feel that way, knowing their father's a police officer. And when people say that I'm delusional, and when they say defund the police doesn't mean you're anti-police, but then turn around in the same statement and say, we're anti-education because we won't agree to the entire amount of the budget they ask for, well, which is it? So you can't talk out of both sides of your mouth. Either they are and we're not, or we are and they're not, but you can't have it both ways. So that's where I stand on that. You know, you do what you want in your own home, but when our children go into our public classrooms, if nothing in the room creates tension for a child, isn't that what it's about? Shouldn't they feel in a safe space, all of them? I mean, the, the children that are bullied. I, all for one, think our state reps should take the Public Safety Academy in Enfield that has very few students in it and turn it into a, a military school that all us elderly people knew when we were kids, our parents would say, if you don't behave, I'm sending you to military school. And take the amount of money that the Board of Education's throughout our state fund to try to discipline the one student who disrupts a classroom. If that student creates a risk or a threat to another student or a, a staff member, the student automatically gets removed and will go to that school. If the parents have a problem with that, the parents can find alternate education for them. But I really think our state electives should look at that, and, because this is where so much of the money gets tied up, and the staff in our schools, we've seen the videos with some of these children do to our staff members. I, I would hope they'd be on board with me. But other than that, the Dr. Seuss reading was the highlight of my year. I agree, I look forward to it every year. I had the honor of reading to the three-year-olds. One of them was my grandson, and it was a great time, and I will say it a million times, ECDC is one of the great programs that this town has to offer to all our residents, and I couldn't be more proud of what they do for our children. So with that, I'll turn it over to the town manager.
Well, after all of that from all of you, it's very difficult to follow. I had a couple of notes on the senior repair. My understanding that the program that they had run.
Volunteer tax.
Was, no, I'm talking about, there's two. The senior repair, people had asked. The assistant town attorney had issued an opinion saying that they did have the discretion to spend it. He will do a resolution at the, for the next meeting indicating that, so you can direct the commission to say, the money is there for you and it's appropriate for you to, to use it in any manner you deem appropriate within your charter. So we'll have that done. On the, I will ask John, when he comes up, because he's going to be coming up on all the different transfers, to answer the question on the circuit breaker and the deadlines that Mr. Ludwig, Ludwig questioned. And we'll put your information up, if you deliver it to me, please, young lady. We will put that up tomorrow for you, and thank you. Okay. And I think as, as far as answering any of the questions we had had, that, that was the extent of it for me. If there's questions, I'm here to answer. But thank you.
Beautiful. Thank you. Sorry about that, Chris. I thought, yeah. Town attorney report?
I'll be quick. No report.
Okay. Can you make it a little quicker next time, please, Mark? All right. Thank you. So we are moving on to the reports of special committees. We'll start with Councilman Nasuda.
All right. Thank you. Last council meeting, I brought up some concerns on funding for the school roofs from the state of Connecticut and the eligibility for reimbursement in conjunction with the school modernization project. On this past Friday, a Zoom call took place between the state of Connecticut and the town of Enfield to address specific concerns. Attending the meeting from the town was the town manager, Mayor Nelson, myself, DPW Director Donald Noons, School Superintendent Steve Macchio, and Director of Operations, John Dag, and Representative Carol Hall. And at this time, I would like to thank Representative Hall for setting this meeting up. The answer was received, the answer we received, we can move forward with the roof projects and not affect the modernization projects as long as the roof renovation work is not impacted in the modernization projects. After the call, there was discuss, a long discussion was held. It was decided we would be moving forward with the following roofs, Parkman, Stowe, and Crandall. There was some further discussion, and it was determined that we would move forward with putting bid packages together, not putting them out, but putting the bid packages together, and also at the same time, putting our submission to the state for the reimbursement together at the same time. We did find out we can submit, put the bids out as long as we're simultaneously putting the funding applications in as well. So we are moving forward with them. This is good news, and I want to thank everyone for their help and support in getting this going. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Anyone else? Councilman Russo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Pre-K through five, school modernization. So we're just getting started. Last Wednesday, we had our second meeting of the committee, and no pressure here, the chairman is in the audience, so hopefully I took good notes. If I get something wrong, Randy, just let me know. Myself, Bob, Gina, and Jim all sit on the committee. We did a tour of the building last Wednesday at Hazard Memorial Elementary School. For a lot of people that have a pulse on Hazardville Memorial, I'm not telling you anything new when I say the school is in rough shape. After the tour of Hazard Memorial, we then conducted our regular meeting at Eli Whitney Elementary School. We discussed a little bit about the timeline. Even if we are super aggressive on our end, there's really no way we're able to get this referendum to vote for November election. It's probably just, it's, it's not going to happen. There's a lot of work on the state's end, and unfortunately, it's going to take some time. So it looks like we're, we'll be well into probably 2026 before we can have a special referendum vote for the citizens to vote on. One of the big first steps includes something that we will be voting on tonight. It's Agenda Item H. We'll be voting on funds for architectural and engineering costs. I'm going to take a gamble, and I'm confident to say that it will get approved. We can then start the process of hiring an architect with an RFQ, that's a Request for Qualifications. Interested architectural firms will send us a quality-based selection. The selected architectural firm will only be hired for the initial design phase, and that includes schematic drawings. We're going to have to send another bid out later on for another architectural firm. It may be the very same one we select for the first one. It could be different for the second one, though. Next meeting will be next Wednesday, March 12th. We've been meeting twice a month, but we may at some point have to go to weekly meetings. We want to hear from the citizens and stakeholders, so next meeting, we'll be discussing procedures to allow public input, so people can come see us, give us their input, their thoughts, what exactly they'd like this to see or, or consider. For next Wednesday, we're going to start with a tour of the Stowe Early Learning Center, and then we'll meet later at Enfield Street School. And that's all I have. Hopefully, I hit on a few points. I know I didn't hit them all, but that's it for now, unless Gina, Bob, or Jim want to add something.
No, I'm going to wait until we get to Item H.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Anybody else? Councilman Ungar.
I just want to say, we had our very first meeting for the 250th anniversary of our great nation, and we had a lot of, what's the word I'm looking for? A lot of options, a lot of people had ideas, and our focus is, is going to be in 2026 and with a special focus in July. So we have a lot of ideas flowing, and I'm looking forward to our meetings, and I'll keep you updated as we progress.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, we will move on to unfinished business. A resolution to hold a public hearing regarding municipal redevelopment authority.
Mr. Mayor, I think, do we need a motion to take this off the table? Or?
Yeah.
I think, so, so I'll move to take this off the table, and so, just a question, do you, I don't know where you guys are, do you want to just put it on the consent agenda, or do you want to have a discussion? Because I'll move to take it off the table and put it on the consent, or do you want to have?
Take it off and vote on it right here.
Okay, very good. Okay, so vote to take it off the table?
Motion's made in second. All in favor? Okay, are there any questions? So this is a resolution to hold the public hearing. The gentleman came and spoke about it, and like I said, I, it can't hurt to hear what the public says, so I fully support the public hearing. Anyone else? Okay. All in favor?
You have to read the resolution.
Thank you. I make, excuse me, could I make a motion to waive the reading of the resolution?
Sure. All right. So be it resolved. The Enfield Town Council does hereby schedule a public read, a public hearing regarding joining the municipal redevelopment authority program to be held on March 17th, 2025, at 6:55 PM in the council chambers, 820 Enfield Street, Enfield, Connecticut. In order to receive public comment, a prepared 210, 2025, prepared by Aaron Markovich, Director of Economic and Community Development.
So moved.
Okay. That's how we.
Sorry, just a point of order. They made, they made a motion to waive, which that's the resolution.
To raid the.
But you don't have to read that. The resolution is the.
To waive the reading, but the mayor read it.
Right, so that's okay?
So that's okay. We can.
All right.
Thanks for reading it anyway.
I don't know why we're doing things different, but go ahead, roll call, please.
Councilor Ludwig.
Four.
Councilor Mangini.
Four.
Councilor Nasuda.
Four.
Mayor Nelson.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Pisner.
Yes, four.
Councilor Russo.
Four.
Councilor Santinella.
Four.
Councilor Ungar.
Four.
Councilor Sikala.
Four.
Councilor Crisati.
Four.
And Councilor Hendrickson.
Four.
Eleven in favor and against.
Thank you, Sheila. Next is new business, motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Motion's made and seconded. Any questions? There are none on consent? All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? It is unanimous. Thank you. And then next is the, there are no appointments this evening, and then C is a resolution to change the road alignment and side. this evening. And then C is a resolution to change the road alignment and sidewalk alignment on Martin Terrace. Now, we were given three different options. So the resolution is to change the road alignment and sidewalk alignment on Martin Terrace. DPW listened to the concerns of some of the residents during public input on February 3, 2025, and derived three possibility or possible options for Martin Terrace. Option one, keep the design presented with sidewalks on the easterly side and shift the road to the west to create a five-foot snow shelf. Option two, keep the sidewalks on the westerly side, add a five-foot snow shelf, shift the road to the east, and remove the easterly sidewalks. And option three, narrow the road to 15 feet, install four-foot sidewalks on both sides of the road, and create a three-foot snow shelf on each side. There is no impact. Recommendation is that the Enfield Town Council approve the following resolution. Be it resolved that the Enfield Town Council approves option A, or one, two, or three, as set forth above, date prepared 228, 2025, prepared by Donald T. Nunes, Director of Public Works.
So moved, excuse me.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Questions? John, did you?
I'm sorry. This is for the town clerk. We have to wait till we know the option before we fill in the resolution, right?
Yes. I was, when I came back this morning from having a day off and saw this resolution, I was trying to figure out how you were going to do it, and I assumed that you would be discussing it, kind of come to a consensus, and someone would make a motion.
So moved. So moved. And then we need a second.
Already moved a second, yeah.
Yep. Motion's made and seconded. Now, so let's have a conversation, and then whatever we come to consensus on, we make an amendment. Go ahead, Mike.
First of all, Donald, thank you. This goes under the basis of no good deed goes unpunished. So I think this is exactly what we should do with taxpayer money. So I appreciate the extra work, we, you know, because you didn't have to come back to us, even though it was approved by the taxpayer. And again, that's, that extra check is great. So I hate to put you on the spot. We've heard, you know, for and against. I'm leaning towards the one or three.
I have.
Because three addresses, because I know, as I've been saying for speed bumps for 20 years, I know that's a whole separate, I would love to see us traffic calming on that street, and more streets. But I know we have a whole policy we haven't even developed yet, and whether we're going to do it or not. So it's a separate conversation, even though I'd love to see it. So three, so hearing the concerns of the folks who showed up last meeting, you know, I'm leaning towards three, because they didn't want to give up their sidewalk. The narrow road, narrow road maybe slows down traffic a little bit as well. I mean, but, so I'm just kind of, I don't, I mean, I'm not trying to pick and choose here, because it's their, it's resident money, but we have to make a decision.
Understood. Alex, can you switch over, please?
I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but.
Yeah. No, to Ali the concerns for the bus stop, we did speak with the, we did speak with the.
Oh, it's behind Counselor Russo's head. I couldn't see it.
Thank you, Alex.
Thank you. Appreciate it. And now it's got six options.
So this is just again, kind of the overview again, where Martin, Martin Terrace is, here's the North Street Cemetery, and Central Library is down there. This is looking easterly towards the intersection of where Elm and North Street Cemetery is, and this is the westerly intersection through here. So.
So a key point, they currently both have sidewalks on both sides.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. So this is, would be option one, would be to, where this sidewalk was, we would return that to grass. There would be the snow shelf here, and that sidewalk would continue down the road. I did not draw it, because it would just be so muddled after that point. But this is what it would look like from retaining the easterly side, removing the westerly. Now, option two, just flips that around, where we remove the sidewalk here, and put the sidewalk on this side, and put the snow shelf over there. And option three would be that. So, but also, well, before Alex came in, to Ali the concerns about the bus, the bus company did say, whether the actual kids stood right here, whether they stood here, or whether they stood in the middle for some reason, they would block the road anyways, just didn't let the kids walk to the bus. So they would block the road automatically, no matter where the kids are told to stop.
Thank you.
Or stand. So.
And as you recall, that was the biggest reason we wanted to come back, to address that. So the rest of it is, you know, not life and death. That was the key consideration. And the other options are more aesthetic, and to take into account what the residents' comments were.
I know it's not our issue, I don't think. The bush covers the one-way sign, based on your.
It's on town property.
It's on town property. Maybe we get the, yeah. So I'm sorry, look, I don't want, I'm not trying to pick sides in this, and I feel bad that, now that we're going to kind of have to make a decision where some folks may be upset, and it's their neighborhood. So when I weigh the options, having both sidewalks, leave it the way it is and make it look better, I don't know, that's kind of what I'm leaning. Even though I feel option one is the best option, but again, folks came, and this is their neighborhood. Some don't, didn't want to lose their sidewalk, and I can appreciate that.
Yep.
I mean, we're trying to, it's, I'm trying to be fair to everybody. I know you can't do that when you're trying to be fair, because I know that's not possible. But I appreciate you, and again, I know you, and the other thing, too, because you weren't here last meeting, you, your staff went out and talked, I think handed out flyers or a pile.
JP Rodriguez went and handed out per.
So please, I mean, just recognize that publicly. I mean, we were dealing with many tough issues, and the fact that local government still takes that extra, you know, step, or very important customer service step, whether you're for or against or in the middle. Again, that's good stuff on your staff's part. So thank you, and thank you for Mr. Rodriguez as well.
Okay.
Yeah, so I, I know I'm kind of all over the place, but, but I'm kind of leaning toward option three, and I apologize, Mr. Rinaldi, because I know it's probably not what you would like, but that's kind of what I'm leaning. Talk me out of it, Donald.
Counselman Hendrickson.
So one of the questions Mr. Rinaldi did bring up is cost, and I know there's no budget on here. Is there a difference in cost between the three options?
Well, this one here, we're narrowing, we're saving six feet wide minimum of pavement for the entire length of that roadway, but putting that same money back into the sidewalks, even though they're not five and five, they're going to be four and four. So all of these are all kind of balancing out. The only one that will generate some is to remove one from once, the entire one from one side.
Option one.
Right. Or two. Doesn't, at that point, it's, they're pretty much the same.
I have been down that street. Now, this picture actually shows cars parked on the street at 15 feet wide, and cars parked there. Is this going to cause a problem?
There'll have to be no parking.
There'll have to be no parking.
It's going to be very snug.
With the option, option three, there'll be no parking on the street.
Correct.
The other, option one, there will be parking on the street.
Correct.
Can you put up option one again, please?
All right. You know, Bob brought up the point, but that street is a problem. And if we could somehow make it a dead-end street into a cul-de-sac, that would be the solution for me. Stops the traffic, stops the speeding, protects the kids, but we can't. I cannot take away the on-street parking from those residents to do sidewalks on both sides. The residents brought up some very valid points about the school buses, made me rethink everything. But then we got the answer. They blocked the whole road. No cars are going around. They blocked the entire road, so the children can stand in their driveway. When the bus gets there, they can cross, because the car's not passing by, which eliminated that. And on a narrower road, that's possible.
Right.
You know? So I am going to have to agree with Mr. Rinaldi and, or Roggerio, Rinaldi, and go with option one. You know, it's, it's a tough road. It's a tough decision. There's not a lot of houses on it. But option one definitely, to me, seems the way to go. Normally, if there was on-street parking, I would be with you 100% Mike.
I do. It's a key point. I mean, fair.
Yep. So that's where I am.
You should have set me straight when I was asking you.
That's why he asked Donald. All right. Bob?
Yeah. Thank you. At the meeting last week, when you did explain all of these options, really wasn't even thinking about on-street parking. All right. So when we look at option three, obviously, there will be no on-street parking. Now, I don't know how much on-street parking is done normally on that, on that street. I'm not privy to that. Is it just be, is it from somebody just visiting, or is it residents parking on the street because they didn't have enough room in their driveway? That I don't know. You know, so this is a catch-22 here. You're looking at the safety on option number three. You know, you're narrowing the road, you're appeasing both sides of the, of the street with sidewalks. Tough, tough situation, you know? I do understand it would eliminate on-street parking, which might sway me to option one. So that, that's what I'm, I'm thinking right now. I know I can't have a back and forth with you, but I'm hoping that, that the residents aren't using street parking, because they don't have, they don't want to use their driveway, or their driveway's too small for the number of vehicles that they might have. That's, hopefully, that's not the reason. So, right now, I came in tonight thinking option three. Right now, I'm leaning towards I'd be okay with option one.
Yep.
For that particular reason. That's it. Period. So that's my.
Councilman Hendrickson had to mess it up for all of us. We're all set, right, Bob? We were with Mike, and, yeah. So, again, it's the parking Thanksgiving dinner. You have two relatives come over. You're done. You have no place to park. And because of the location of that street, I don't know where the closest place would be for somebody to go. It's just not fair to the residents. So I agree with you, Bob. It's a tough decision, but.
So, so, Cal.
One, option one. Go ahead, Mike.
So, yeah, I agree. Again, thank, again, I want to emphasize, thank you. This is the way it's supposed to, in my opinion, it's supposed to be done. You went out, you talked to the residents. We gave them a chance, whether, you know, we're for or against or whatever. So again, I appreciate your staff doing this. This is important. I think important point here is we're debating this, that we actually went out and talked to folks, which is great. And so, again, I go, really, I want you to know, I appreciate it. And since you sort of didn't tell me there would be no on-street parking on option three, I agree with Counsel, Counselor Hendrickson. I agree. I don't want to be putting, we tell them, I want no parking signs. Folks should be able to park in the street. So I will be in agreement with option one, even though I would prefer, because I know, I know that street well. I've talked to some of the residents. Those sidewalks are probably the worst in town, and I know we have some. So the good news is they're going to be fixed, and it's going to look great. So that's the good news here. So I'm willing to go with option one. So you convinced me. By omission, you convinced me.
I want to, I want to go one more. So I, me personally, I think this is a perfect street to test out traffic calming measures. It's a short street. It's a narrow street, and it's a major cut through. So I'm asking, along with the amendment, to go to option one, if the council's okay to use this as a test street, can we discuss in DPW about adding one or two speed bumps and test, use this road as our test for the community? Mike, you've been pushing ever since I came back.
You're really trying to throw, you're trying to bring speed bumps into it. You're really, you know.
So, I mean, it's not that big of a road. I think, you know, if you guys are okay, but it's something that we've talked about a lot. I think this is a perfect road to try it on, because the residents complained about it, and we're doing the road over, and one-way street.
I agree, because I'd love to be able to do this, and then, like I said, then eventually get to Abbey Road and that terrible corner on Abbey Road.
Right. So I don't want to tie the road up, but, you know, if it's, you know, another $5,000, because they're paving the road anyways, you know, to add that extra blacktop and some signage, if you guys are okay to make that part of the amendment, and.
So it'll go, just for, it'll go to DPW, then it's got to come to public safety, right? Do we have to? I would, right? Should it be both subcommittees?
All right. So let's.
I would definitely say.
Let's finish this amendment for one, and then if you guys give consensus, public safety and DPW for the speed bumps, and we'll bring it back to you.
I'll make an amendment to add option one to the resolution.
Second. Motion's made and seconded. Any other questions on the amendment? Seeing none. All in favor of the amendment. That's good. Okay. And then entertain a motion to accept the resolution as amended.
So moved.
And seconded. Okay. Roll call, please.
Counselor Ludwig.
Four.
Counselor Mangini.
Four.
Counselor Nasuda.
Four.
Mayor Nelson.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Pisner.
Four.
Counselor Russo.
Four.
Counselor Santinella.
Four.
Counselor Ungary.
Four.
Counselor Sikala.
Four.
Counselor Krasati.
Four.
And Counselor Hendrickson.
Four.
Eleven in favor, none against.
Okay. And then can we get consensus to discuss the speed bumps and public safety in DPW for this road? Thank you. All right. Moving on.
We'll add those to the both agendas, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
For the next meetings.
Resolution to transfer funds for the WPCF Fuel Tank Replacement Project of $150,000. Be it resolved that in accordance with Chapter 6, Section 8F of the Town Charter, the following transfer is hereby made from Water Pollution Control. Salary $75,000. Health and medical insurance, $75,000. To Water Pollution Control, transfers to Capital, $150,000. From WPC Capital Revenue, WPC Transfer In, $150,000. To WPC Capital, nonrecurring. Other equipment, $150,000. Date prepared 2/24/2025, prepared by Donald T. Nunes, Director of Public Works.
Second.
Motion's made. Any comments? It's pretty straightforward. Roll call.
Counselor Ludwig.
Four.
Counselor Mangini.
Four.
Counselor Nasuda.
Four.
Mayor Nelson.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Pisner.
Four.
Counselor Russo.
Four.
Counselor Santinella.
Four.
Counselor Ungary.
Four.
Counselor Sikala.
Four.
Counselor Krasati.
Four.
And Counselor Hendrickson.
Four.
Eleven in favor, none against.
Okay. Next is a resolution to transfer funds for the replacement of the playground safety surfacing at the Central Library, $217,000. Be it resolved that in accordance with Chapter 6, Section 8F of the Town Charter, the following transfer is hereby made. From Capital Non-Reoccurring Buildings and Grounds Storage Building, Construction Services, $217,000. To Capital Non-Reoccurring Town Playground Improvements, Construction Services, $217,000. Date prepared 2/17/2025, prepared by Donald T. Nunes, Director of Public Works.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. Any comments? What we're doing, go ahead, Gina.
I know that we had asked some of these questions in our caucus prior, and we did get the answers. But if you could just sort of comment for the public, what the B&amp;G Storage Building was, is why we're not doing it, just so people have a little bit of background.
During the facilities consolidation plan of about four years ago, we, we were going to move B&amp;G from Prospect Street to the annex. We had plans made up, and we went out to bid two times, one as a design build, one as a regular build. And the, after COVID, during COVID and post-COVID, the steel prices have just absolutely skyrocketed, and the footprint that is needed would, we would require triple what the budget was to make that, to make it even viable. So we're talking, the budget that we had was in the 65 to 6800 square foot range, which is small compared to the amount of equipment that is still parked outside and not under full cover. At B&amp;G, it was, all the calculations were made. We're looking for, we would realistically need about a 17,000 to 18,000 square foot building, again, which would basically triple the cost and just put it way out of financial reach. It didn't make sense anymore.
So what's Plan B for that?
Right now, there's, stay where they are.
And how long is that going to be feasible or appropriate?
I don't know. I don't know the answer to that question. They've been there for. They've been there for many years. I understand. I just, again, it was, it was so out of, it's so out of touch with the pricing, it just does not make sense to do that.
And when did we do that? When was that quote?
Thousand, one was in '21, and one was in late '23.
Okay. All right, I mean, I guess, just my comment, I, I believe, and I could be wrong, I thought that either in one of these recent budgets, we talked about the playground resurfacing, and it was taken out of one of the budget CIPs, I think. I could be wrong, but I feel like I remember that being in a budget over the last couple of years. So, I'm in favor of resurfacing the rotary playgrounds because I know it needs to be done. I just get worried when we take funds from a project because the project needs to be done, but we need more money to finish that project or to do it to the specs that we need to. And this is no, this is not on you, this is just in general. So, we're going to take that money and not do the project at all, and we're going to take it and put it towards another project. That, that type of, I guess, shell game kind of worries me. But I do want to do the rotary playground because I understand that really needs to be done. But it does worry me that we've had this plan about this B&amp;G building for many, many years, and it's just, now it's expensive, so we're not going to do it. So, that's just my two cents.
Okay. Councilman Ludwig.
And I think, just for some, to that, and I point some perspective, we were going to sell that property. I'm going back, didn't happen. And I thought then we were going to, as, we were going to do it at the annex, but then there was some discussion of doing a, you know, the DPW building where we were going to do some improvements there. Sort of the plan evolved as things changed. It wasn't just the bid. The plan evolved, and unfortunately, we weren't very successful selling the Prospect Street property, which was sort of the, we were trying to get some property off the taxpayers' hands. So, unfortunately, we had a great plan, it just didn't sort of all come in. So, I appreciate you, but it was also, there's a lot of other moving parts that were going on to bring everyone back. I think it was 2019-ish before we went out. Yeah, then I understand it became problematic based on the cost. But also, I think there was also a lot of different moving parts within this whole plan that we had. And we've had to scuttle some of it, unfortunately. I certainly understand the Counselor Sikala's point, but I think there's also a larger idea here that just never, unfortunately, could get underway because of certain things that happened, you know, with the economy, and of course, COVID, you know, kicked in. So, just to give everyone a little perspective there. Thank you.
So, I was not involved in anything to do with closing down Prospect Street or building a building. And the project was never funded. It was never built. So, it really has nothing to do with this current council. The concerns would have been why it wasn't done a year ago, or two years ago, or three years ago. But in any case, she is correct. We did move the money this last elect, this last budget because we had to fund the Board of Education. And we cut all CIP. Every project we had in the works to straighten the ship and get us moving forward. And like the Board of Ed, we are finally getting our footing as a town, and we're able to start rebuilding and moving forward. And I think it's a good place to be, both on the board and the town, because the board's in pretty good shape right now. And I commend them for what they had to do. They had to make tough choices, no different than us. And this is us now putting back priorities that we know we're okay. So, Donald, you came up with a bunch of different options that we had asked in DPW to try to lower the cost. This is the best option. This is the rotary playground. Even though it was years ago, they paid for it. They did everything, and it was a donation to the town of Enfield. And it's pretty sad that it's in the shape it's in right now because, again, previous councils refused to fund it. So, I want to fund it, and let's give our children a safe place to play at the Enfield Public Library. So, we're just putting the money back that we borrowed at budget time. So, anybody else? Seeing none, roll call.
Counselor Ludwig.
Four.
Counselor Mangini.
Four.
Counselor Nasuda.
Four.
Mayor Nelson.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Pisner.
Four.
Counselor Russo.
Four.
Counselor Santinella.
Four.
Counselor Angier.
Four.
Counselor Sikala. And Counselor Crissati.
Four.
And Counselor Hendrickson.
Four.
Eleven in favor, none against.
Okay. Okay, next is a resolution to transfer, no, we did DPW. Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. I got it, I found it. Resolution to transfer funds for the DPW fuel station, $838,000. Be it resolved that in accordance with Chapter 6, Section 8F of the Town Charter, the following transfer is hereby made from Capital Non-Reoccurring Fund Alden Avenue Gym Buildings, $582,910.24 from Capital Non-Reoccurring Fund B&amp;G Storage Building Construction Services, $255,089.76 to Capital Non-Reoccurring Fund Fuel Tank Replacement Construction Services, $838,000. Date prepared 2/27/2025, prepared by Donald T. Noons, Director of Public Works.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. This, again, is another project that we had to take the money from at budget time. And again, these tanks expire, as I explained to Mr. Young, he had great questions, but they expire next year. We don't have a choice. They have to be replaced. So, we are putting the money back in the account, and it will be a multi-year funding stream to get this project done. Councilman Ludwig.
Again, thank you. They will be replaced by above just, above ground tanks, correct?
They'll be, correct, above ground tanks.
So, as we talked, sorry, as we talked, is there, as part of this project, maybe it's not, was we put money away? Can we also think about having, again, sort of a safety, you know, a storage, if, you know, again, kind of learning some of the things? If our supply gets cut off, as we went through the possibility of longshoremen's strike, can we develop another, or if it's another tank, whatever it may be for like a two-month, I'm going two-month extra supply as, you know, if January hits through March, if supply gets cut off, we're able to get through the winter with our plows, our, you know, the police cars, EMS? Just curious, as when we look to this project eventually, and you price it all out, that we could include something like that?
Okay.
Just, I'm just, folks disagree, I'm just saying...
We'll look at some options and have them for your consideration during the budget.
Because if we, I think it's a good idea, and learning some of the things where if supply's cut off, and we don't have, it's winter, and we don't have fuel for our vehicles, we could be in tough shit. And two months, just thinking of the two-month supply because of winter. Just kind of an idea.
Right, and see how big the tanks are, and what we use a month, and what we actually have versus storage.
Right.
Yep. If we got to add an additional tank or something, we can talk about it.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Anybody else? Roll call.
Counselor Ludwig.
Four.
Counselor Mangini.
Four.
Counselor Nasuda.
Four.
Mayor Nelson.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Pisner.
Four.
Counselor Russo.
Four.
Counselor Santinella.
Four.
Counselor Angier.
Four.
Counselor Sikala.
Four.
Counselor Crissati.
Four.
And Counselor Hendrickson.
Four.
Eleven in favor, none against.
Thank you. Next is a... Thank you, Donald. Have a great night. Next is a transfer, a request for transfer of funds to the Town Attorney legal account of $85,000. Resolve that in accordance with Chapter 6, Section 8F of the Town Charter, the following transfer is hereby made from General Fund, appropriated fund balance, $85,000; to Town Attorney Legal, $85,000. Date prepared 2/21/2025, prepared by Thomas J. Tyler, Town Attorney. Motion's made and seconded. Now, this, this is a transfer to the Town Attorney's account because it's time to pay for the fight against the solar project. I think the town gave it a great effort. We did. But, you know, in this state, it's very tough to go against the siting council. But to Councilman Ludwig and Hendrickson's credit, we fought it. We agreed to back them up, and now we got to pay. And then, part of it is union negotiations and stuff like that. So, that's what it's for. Any other? Seeing none, roll call.
Counselor Ludwig.
Four.
Counselor Mangini.
Four.
Counselor Nasuda.
Four.
Mayor Nelson.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Pisner.
Four.
Counselor Russo.
Four.
Counselor Santinella.
Four.
Counselor Angier.
Four.
Counselor Sikala.
Four.
Counselor Crissati.
Four.
And Counselor Hendrickson.
Four.
Eleven in favor, none against.
Okay, the next one, I'm going to ask Mr. Daigle to come on up. And this is a resolution to transfer funds for architectural and engineering costs for the pre-K5 elementary schools and Eagle Academy Therapeutic Day School Pre-Referendum Committee. And it's for $102,961. Be it resolved that in accordance with Chapter 6, Section 8F of the Town Charter, the following transfer is hereby made from General Fund Revenue, appropriated fund balance, $102,961; to General Fund Non-Departmental Charges, transfers out and contingencies, transfer to Capital, $102,961; from Capital Non-Reoccurring Fund and Revenues, General Fund Transfer In, $102,961; to Capital Non-Reoccurring Fund Facilities, feasibility, demographic. Other professional fees, $100,000; salaries, part-time, $2,750; social security, $171; and Medicaid, Medicare, $40. Date prepared 2/28/2025, prepared by John A. Wilcox. Motion's made and seconded. Now, I did have a discussion, when this was discussed at leadership, there was some concerns about the dollar amount. We thought we raised it enough to cover it. I've had conversations with Mr. Daigle about it, and John Wilcox backed him up when we discussed it. So, I figured the best thing would be for Randy to come in and explain everything so the public can hear exactly what's going on in the change. And I don't know if we need John to come up with him, because we're going to be looking for a location for other money, too. So, that's up to you guys.
Yeah, I think John should come up.
Why don't you come on up, John, too? So, Randy, why don't you go ahead, and you can start.
All right. So, I'm Randy Daigle. Fortunate enough to be the chair of this committee. I love how you're throwing out those acronyms. So, unfortunately, when, when the committee got together and we gathered all the reports, all the studies that we've done in the past several years, it came to my attention that, based on my experience in, as what I do for the state and for the town, that there was insufficient amount of funds to hire an architectural engineering firm for the pre-ref services. Excuse me. So, what I wanted to do was kind of outline the areas and justify my request to ask for $200,000. As you can see, what is required for the architect to get this from where it is now to the pre-ref? They have to come in, they have to review all the past studies and reports for all of the schools. They got to evaluate all proposed programs for each of the remaining schools. Now, when I say programs, as you all know, every class and every program is there for a specific reason, and it encompasses a lot of students. So, we have to really design these buildings based on the program needs. So, it's not an easy task, even though it's a one quick sentence. They have to meet with all the school end users to define the program, and they have to come up with the use of sizes that's required. They also have to design the floor plans for each of the remaining schools. They also have to do traffic and bus routes for each of the schools. If we're changing any of the footprints of the schools, if we're increasing enrollment, as we found out at JFK, the bus loop, when the state and architects do studies for bus routes and the bus loops, it's based on the percentage of students that are bust, in the bust area. Since the pandemic, we no longer can use that factor. We, because parents, no matter if the kid, if the children are 100 yards away or two miles away, parents are dropping the kids off. So, not only do we have 13 to 20 buses, we have 30-plus cars now in line. We designed JFK to accommodate the required, and we, we actually designed it a little bit better occupancy-wise, load-wise. The first day of school, there was cars all the way to Four Corners Package Door, and it has not stopped. So, we had to reconfigure the bus loop because now parents, instead of having your child sit on the bus for 40 minutes, they're deciding to drive the kids and drop them off. So, they're in line now. So, that 15 to 20 buses, we're adding another 15 to 30 cars on it. So, that's very important in redefining the, the school traffic. We have to develop a phase plan for the construction of each of the schools. I'm going to go down at the end, and I'm going to be showing you some slides of what the phase is going to be entailed. Establish the construction costs and estimate for each of the remaining schools, current and escalated costs. I will talk, we will actually need to come back for funds to hire a third-party review. These funds here are going to be just for the architecture, engineering services. The state requires a third-party review come, come and review when we make our submission for our grant application. That is based on the drawings that we're going to be submitting to the state. So, right now, I can't come up with the cost estimate, fees would be for a third-party review. If a new school is required, especially if we need to swing space during the construction, we need to find the property. The state does have, and this is something I just found out yesterday, I mean, Friday, Thursday, I spent an hour and a half with the school board and grants facility, and I spent another hour this morning with them in a meeting. Before, the state would not fund any type of purchasing of property for reimbursement projects. The state has now changed it. They have a grant program to purchase land. They also have what's called a replacement program. What that is, if we were to, if we were to close a school and then knock it down, and then build a new school on that property, they have a reduced lot requirement. Right now, we're required to have 100, 150 square feet per, per student, and then it goes above that dependent upon program. So, we may need 16 to 18 acres on schools. Elementary schools are a little bit different. Junior high and high school, you have sports involved. Elementary, you have recess and activities outside, so you don't need the ball fields. They also realize that there's not a lot of prime land out there, so it's called urban development. So, they reduce the requirement for lot sizes. So, instead of having 20 acres, we could build the, a brand-new building on 16 acres. That being said, it's very crucial because we have limited space, limited land, town-owned land. So, by having town-owned land, not only do we have that, but if we do decide to build on any pieces of property that the town does own, we also, we have to do tests. We have to do perk tests, we have to do environmental tests to make sure that you can actually build on these sites. So, that's one of the, another big thing we have to do. We have to do, like I said, civil and environmental testing to make sure we can use the site. The architect not only has to do all that, but he has to design the building for, but he only has to design it to what's called schematic designs. He's not designing it to put out under construction. We have to design it as schematic design to make sure that we can meet all the programs. Now, this is the big-ticket item here. There's a thing that the state requires for each of these buildings, each of these schools, existent or new, and it's called an ED spec. ED specs are the guides standards used by the educators and the design professionals to describe an educated program and facility. So what I'm going to do after this is I'm going to go show you what an ED spec looks like, and we have to do one of these for each of the schools. They're anywhere from 180 to 250 pages. And it's basically designing the entire building, program, use, existent, you have to document existent furniture, which furniture's not going to be used, IT, scope, storage area, all narrative wise. And then your drawing has to match that in order to even submit to the state for a grant. So one of the, let me, I could go. So there's two different ED specs that we're going to be using. We have two different education. We have elementary school, and then we're going to have child development, which is kindergarten. This is, this here, this one here is the child development, consists of about 24 pages. But what it does is it basically defines every single use, every use of the building. We have to determine the teachers, we have to do the staff, we have to determine the quality of staff, if there's special needs, if they're not, if they are, we have special requirements for those areas. The activities, anywhere from play-in to nap into story time, where they're going to do this. All these areas have to be defined. We cannot drive a building and say, well, you guys use it what you need it for. That doesn't, it's not how it works. Like I said, we also have to determine loose furniture. We're going to either reuse some furniture, or we're going to purchase new furniture. That's called FFNE. That is a separate reimbursement that we get from the state. So all that has to be defined. Everything from soap dispensers to urinals, we have to specify so we have a cost associated with the estimate. We can't go to the state and say it's going to cost, lack of a better word, $50 million, and then once we do the drawings and put them out the bid, and it's 150, it's our loss. You can't go back. So we have to have this right. That's why the state property, the state review board, the codes and compliant and school boards ask for the third-party review. So our number is just not a roll of the dice number. So these are basically, this is an actual ED spec that we use for training. It dials it right down to every use, every function, every purpose. And this is the shorter one. Like I said, this one here is 29 pages. Now, this is the ED spec for elementary school. This is the one that we're going to be nailing on most of the schools. It's going to be one or two where we can use the pre-K one. This is 246 pages. Every school's going to have to require this. When I had my firm, we would charge $25,000 to $35,000 per ED spec. We have five, we have four schools that we may end up using that for, and we have maybe one or two new schools depend upon the direction. So whichever way we go, we have five ED specs we're going to be doing. We're not giving this firm $30,000 each. So what we're going to have to do is to make this enticing for the firms to come after this for this phase is that we're going to have to allow them, if it does pass, that they are eligible for the formal contract for the second part of it. One of the things the state requires, though, since we have multiple buildings that are going to be renovated as new, and possibly a new building, the state only allows one architect per school. We can't hire an architect and have him do four schools and then have another one for the new. We have to put it out for bid for each of the schools. The same firm can win all the bids, but they also have to be capable of doing that type of work in the timeframe we have. We initially estimated, we're hoping to have this done for the November ballots, we're not going to be able to make it. So in order to give a target date, the committee, we decided on June 1st of 2026. That'll give the selected firm ample amount of time to do all the requirement, if we have to find property to do the testing that's required. Not only do we have the ED specs that's going to be required, we have something called Phase One Environmental, which means we have to test every school for PCBs, for asbestos, for recontamination. Then we have to have a program designed to renovate these things, to get them clean before we can start the renovations. So it's a two-step process. That fee is a separate fee. If it goes out to referendum, then, then, so if the referendum we have, we ask for $50 million, well, there's going to be additional fees that are associated with the abatement part of it. So that's going to be a separate line item. This ED spec, as I said, is 246 pages. This dials it right down. This is what, this is what the state really truly looks at. Every pupil has to be noted, has to be accounted for, every function that each student possibly can do within the facility itself. Or charts of traffic, if the student may have multiple classes, if the student gets bussed in from somewhere else. Again, we have to define the space. Certain, like I said, every child has a certain amount of square feet. The classrooms have to be designed for them. If they're sped classes, special classes, they have even more. And then that dictates the amount of teachers you have. A regular classroom, you know, you could have anywhere from 18 to 23 people. If you have a special needs classroom, you have one teacher for every two students. So that dictates what the enrollment will be also for the teachers. There's not a single room. Storage rooms are defined. If it's movable for a storage area, it's a fixed storage. The capacity of it, how much storage we can use, what it's going to be used for. Like I said, 256 pages of unbelievable data for each of these schools. So when we talk about fees for this, and I'm hoping that we can make an amendment to the 200. We're also not only looking for architectural fees, we're looking for any consultants he may need for this. In order to submit it to the state, you have to have somebody that's very knowledgeable in the educational submittal process. So a lot of these firms will hire a subconsultant, and they'll submit it under this qual, this QBS qual. So they have not only their fee, now they have a subconsultant. They also have to design the mechanical system. The mechanical system alone is going to be schematically designed where you can get a unit that can take so much volume. It's not specified, but we know roughly the cost for these units. And then we have a square foot cost for material and labor. It's not defined as exact dollar amount like it would be when it goes out to bid. But we have to come to all these. If we're adding any new structures, we have to have a structural engineer on it. It's all under the architect's A&E license, but they have subconsultants too. As you guys know, when we put this out a couple of years ago for the study, we had one firm. We had one firm do it, and that's the firm you guys picked. We received their study, and I reviewed it, and the team reviewed it, and the town reviewed it. And it's, it's, it's not good. It's not worth the, it's not anything we can take and run. We're going to have to reassess, as any other licensed professional that carries liability, you're not going to take another person's documents and just stamp them and let's go with them. So the firm that we choose to hire on this phase, we're just going to have to backpedal a little bit and do some research and verify that some of this data is good. It's not all wasted. So I wouldn't say anything that we've done in the past is wasted. It'll give a, give them a little bit, have a head start. Now, one of the things I did notice today, and it was probably the last 15 out of an hour and a half I had with the state, they did notify me, they said, well, you realize any of these costs for the pre-ref are reimbursable? I said, I did not know that. He says, yeah, if you go for this 200, you're reimbursed 71% of it. And any studies you use for this in the past, the 162,000 we paid Russell and Dawson is also reimbursable because it's for this project. If we did any field studies, any costs associated with that is reimbursable. So that's a good thing. So when I left there, I was feeling pretty good that at least this isn't going to be money, not that it's not well-spent, but it's going to be, you know, money we can put back and reuse in the project. So one of the big items in order, as the town knows, when you put out an RFQ, Request for Qualifications, or an RFP, Request for Proposal, you want to have as much response as possible. Unfortunately, like I said, we had one the last time. I started talking to different firms that specialize in this type of facility, just notifying them that the town will be putting out an RFQ. So hopefully, we're going to get anywhere from six to eight responses. The procedure from there is that once we get the responses from the RFQ, we're going to have to follow a procedure called QBS, Quality-Based Selection, that the town, the state requires us to follow in order to get reimbursement from the state. We have to do all this in order to submit a grant to the state, Secretary of State in order to, an application in order for us to get the grant from the state, which is basically the money to do the construction. So there's a lot of upfront work that has to be done at this phase. One of the problems that the committee has that we haven't tackled yet because we're not quite sure the direction, and I'm getting off track a little bit, but I don't want anyone to be surprised, the logistics of the phasing. This is a massive town event. This is nothing that we're taking lightly. It's going to affect everybody, no matter if you're, have a child in school or not. Unfortunately, there is really no alternative but to go this route because the study that was given and the numbers that you guys were given before were approximately $42 million to do the six schools. Well, there was a caveat, and John Dag, who is incredible, helpful, and very knowledgeable, brought this up to the attention of y'all. And it said it did not include MEP costs, it did not include IT costs, and it did not include security. Based on the square footage alone, we're looking at 1.8 million to 2.6 million per school. So we're at 58 to 62 million now, just to do Band-Aids to cover our maintenance issues on these schools. That's not giving you a brand-new school. That's covering maintenance costs. And that's 100% taxpayers' dollar, not reimbursable. So by going to this route where we're planning on, we're going to make this renovate as new. So by classifying renovate as new, we have to design and build these schools to have a 20-year life cycle. It's not a 20-year warranty, it's a 20-year life cycle. So anything we put in there, we hopefully won't have to do anything within 20 years. We do have warranties on these things, and then if anything does happen, then the town can jump on and have the warranty for these items. But like I was saying, the logistics of this is incredible. Not only do we have to have a swing space, no matter what school we touch, cannot be occupied. This is not the high school, this is not junior high where the kids are, can isolate issues that are going on next door. These kids, we're really close on losing these children. The pandemic wreaked havoc on these kids. These teachers are struggling to keep their attention. If we got jackhammers going on the next classroom over, we lost them. We can't afford that. So we have to do, as a committee, we decided every school that we touch, we're going to have it not occupied. So that means we've got 200 to 300 kids that we've got to place somewhere. Only thing that we've thought about so far is we have to build one new school that could be used as a swing space. The problem with that is, we're building a school to fit which programs. The state won't allow us to build a school, and then when this program comes in, renovate it because they already paid for it. So it has to be pretty much an all-purpose school at the beginning until the last one, and then we renovate it as what it's going to be used for. Not only that, if we do the high school, we have five, four other school, I mean, high school, we do the new school, we have four other schools that need to be renovated. We need to find a location for those schools, for those children during those periods because not only we're moving them out of there, we're trying to do these within the five to seven-year plan. We can't hire an architect next year for a building that we're not even going to touch in three years. So this is, this process of hiring an architect, if it passes referendum, is going to be done several times, depending upon what school is the next in line for renovation. The problem with that is, the problem why we can't, not only, the architect's not going to hold his fee for several years, he's not going to have the staff, and we're not going to ensure if he's the most qualified at that time. Secondly, anything he designs now, it may be out of date, it may be the wrong specification numbers. When they go to bid this in three years, none of these manufacturers may even be around. The technology's going to be different. And God forbid, then the scopes might change. So this is, this is a long-term commitment, and I'm, and I'm not saying it lightly. If this passes referendum, we go. We go, and we go hard. But it's going to be several years of hiring different architects to work on those schools. We're not going to hire one architect or five architects next year to do all these things. So this is a big, this is a big nut, it's a big commitment. And then you have escalation costs. So I'm going to the state with a price of, say, 50 million to 150, and in four years, that school that we thought was going to be 21 million is might be now 28 million. Well, we either have to change programs, or we go begging back to the state. This, this is not anything we can debate for years. This has been debated for years. These schools are in terrible shape. We looked at one the other day, and the riveted sheet metal on the sill where your window is, and if you lift it up, you can put your hand literally through that to the outside. These schools have single-pane glass, the air quality, every one of these schools is either terrible or really close to it. None of them are air-conditioned, none of them are capable of being air-conditioned, and without putting all the units like we did at JFK due to the ceiling and structure heights, so we could run ductwork on the ceiling, I mean, on the roofs and penetrate them there. We're putting new roofs on some of these schools that we're going to be popping a shitload of holes in in about three years. But right now, there's no, there's no way of getting around it. We ran out of buckets. These schools need roofs now. So this is a tough call. This is a tough project. I've been doing this for 26 years, volunteering for the town. This is by far the biggest chore that I've ever entailed, maybe professionally, trying to do the logistics for this. It's something that has to get done. There is no more re-overs, there is no maintenance left. We're spending thousands, millions of dollars on schools, and the foundations are tumbling. I mean, we can't, there's at least two schools that we shouldn't even be occupying. It's, it's literally that bad. So that's kind of where we stand. So my request for 200,000 is legit. And again, we're going to, I'm coming back for more when we do the Phase One for asbestos. We also have to do another, let me get back to the other item, and we also have to do, I'm sorry. So yeah, so the Phase One, like I said, is a requirement. We have to determine if it's contaminated by any means. Typically, it costs anywhere from 3,000 to 5,000 per school to do a Phase One. So we're looking at anything from 12,000 to 20,000. If we were to hire the same firm to do them, we can probably get to the $3,000 range. But to do that, you're looking, just to hire these guys alone, you're probably looking at three months' worth of them going in and doing testing and then going to the lab. So with all intents and purposes of trying to make it happen this year for the November election, we, it's not, it can't, it physically can't happen to do the proper steps that are required to submit to the Secretary of State for our grant. Also, by doing it to, since we're not doing, since we're not making it on a regular election, we don't have to abide by a couple of other criterias. We would have to get everything, all the paperwork in by June 1st in order to make it to the November ballot because it's an election. By having a special election, we could come up with a date. We came up with June 1st because that'll give 16 to 18 months of services that we need. We can move that date. All they need is, is 30, 30 days' notice in order for us to make the election. I've started working with the state, the state is going to be aware of it. I have a workshop next week with them, and we're going to go about what exactly what our scope was to the charter, whether it was to the committee. I'm showing that to the state. They'll be able to help me with the reimbursement figures. Right now, we're at 71.2 point, in that range. There are areas, the Eagle Academy, we can maybe get it up to 79. The pre-K, we might be able to get up to 79. The new school, unfortunately, is not as high, but that's going to be right at the 71%. So there's a lot of work that has to get done in order to make this happen. Not only from day one, well, once I get your approval, we have to start with the RFQ. We have to develop a PAC, Political Action Committee. And what that does is that allows this committee to represent the town and this committee to the taxpayers. Unfortunately, council members, anybody elected, cannot be on it. Members of the pre-ref committee are allowed to attend, but they can't vote on it. So we can attend the meetings and help them. What this What this does is that allows them to help educate the community. They can get donations, they can receive funds, they can buy plaques, they can buy signs, they could buy boards. So when we go to these schools, we're going to have to go to the senior centers several times. We're going to have to go, everybody on the committee is assigned to a PTO, they're going to have to go to PTO meetings. We're going to do like we did at the high school and JFK, we're going to have public forums. Once we get a direction on where we're going, we let them public know, and then they could come in and ask questions. Question-answer period. We need the support of everybody, from seniors to the parents to the people that don't even have children. It's just going to affect everybody in this town. This is a huge, huge project. Like I said, we're looking at five to seven years. I'm seven years into JFK, and we're closing it out now. It took me six and a half years for the high school. All the other schools I did in 2019, those are the ones that were, were going to be affected. Luckily, those areas that we did in 2019 are in great shape still. But this is a long-term commitment. This is, this is a long-term commitment and a lot to ask these people of the town, but unfortunately, there is no alternative. We can't afford 100% taxpayers' money to put Band-Aids on these schools anymore. So my request is, if we can make amendment, if somebody can make a motion or whatever, or ask questions, whatever you want, but I don't, I think that the 200,000 will be enough to be, have firms be excited to after, go after this project, and if we allow them to continue, they can go after the formal contract. I'm open for questions and anything else you guys got. And I know this was not good news, like I tried to bring, but...
So my concern, Randy, is the previous committee came up with a new school, and their number was 220 million plus. Okay? We approved 170 million, and it was not unanimous. So if we're consolidating from six schools to three, obviously, you're putting big additions on the buildings. Whatever three you pick, okay?
Three or four, right. We're looking at probably either three or four.
Well, the fourth would be Eagle Academy, correct?
Eagle, Eagle, we're looking to move to Enfield Street School.
Right, which would be the fourth building.
Yes.
So if we stick with the three buildings, if you're doing giant additions on these buildings, so we can consolidate, we never, we don't touch the elementary school, we do the big addition, it's done, the kids move to that side of the school, then we renovate the school that's there, and then we shut down the next school.
Correct.
And move those children in. We don't have to build a new school. I don't think you're going to pull off the budget of renovating and building one brand-new school in a different area. But to lead these people to think that's an option, I don't understand why we're doing that. I mean, they should be trying to come up with a design.
Right now, everything's an option until we can juggle all the moving pieces. We have a puzzle that has no pictures on it right now. Right now, everything is an option until we determine what is the best, most feasible, cost-effective solution to meet all their program requirements. That is where we're at right now. The 200,000 is something we can negotiate with the firms. It doesn't mean they gain 200.
I'm not worried about that.
No, what I'm saying is, so, direction-wise, they're, they're looking at everything, and then they're going to assist us with the direction. But we can't, we're not going to be able to take a school, put an addition on it with kids in it. We have to find a solution, either it's temporary, I even asked them about Fermi. Unfortunately, Fermi can never be used as a school because it was lost, it was months away from losing its accreditation, and they don't have what's required ADA, mechanical, so we can't use that as an swing space because I looked into that. We're going to have, in the schools right now, we have 25 kids in a classroom, and a lot of them, so we can't bump them up four kids per classroom.
No, I understand that.
I understand what you're saying. But I also agree, when, after looking, I spent seven days, eight hours a day going through every single report, and I think that 200 and something million was grossly overestimated. When I took over JFK, I was able to slash $32 million out of it, and it came in under budget. I looked at these numbers, and I'm looking at the square feet, and I'm looking at these schools, I think I could get closer to that 170.
And if you can, that's why, that's why you're chairman, but here's, here's another thing that, because I've been thinking about this, because I know it's a very tough, tough call. And what if we were to reach out to our state reps and senator and possibly ask them if we could use one floor of the Public Safety Academy? Because if I'm correct, there's only 120 students in that entire building. And even if it was for a year or two, our own staff, our own everything, but use that as swing space, you know? Just a thought. I don't know how that would work.
It's a great thought. We...
I'm sorry, can we just, we're way off in left field, and I think this is...
Well, I know, yeah.
I understand what you're... The committee's going to talk about all of these options. We haven't gotten there yet. I don't mind the suggestions, but we are way in left field on what the 200,000 ask is right now. So to take suggestions on where we should be putting bids right now, I don't think is why we're here, why you're here right now.
Fair enough.
I would like to stick to the specifications.
All right. But I agree 100%, and we go on it, but you're 100% absolutely right. That is one of the considerations that we're, we're going to be addressing if we can, if there's any space in there, can they consolidate to give us a floor and a half or something? We, again, we are looking at every option. If we don't have to build a school, phenomenal. I even talked to the state as, you know, when we do, do this reclaiming of the property, if we can knock a building down and reuse it, we have, we don't have the such strict requirements. Also, I was looking at, because these schools, as you know, they, they can't be added on second-floor-wise. I know I'm losing it to track again, I know.
I keep you on target.
We're not part of the committee. He's trying to fill us in to where they're at right now, and I'm okay with this.
We've had two meetings.
You want the resolution to pass, he needs to explain the direction where you're at right now, and I think the general public watching is very interested in knowing, where is this going?
Pretty sure that he has for the last 20 minutes.
Correct. And he was just talking about something else. Continue, Randy.
So, so one of the things in committee we're looking at is basically building a skeleton over the school. If we can't put a second floor on the school, and we've done this at state level, build a skeleton over and then put the second floor over. Anyways, to get back on topic, you're 100% right, and I apologize. We're looking at every option. So I can't say, no, we're not going to build a new school. I'm saying it's, it's an option. If we could find swing space, then we may not have to build a school. We are looking at every option possible, and that's where we are right now. But I, again, my biggest thing is emphasize that we need to attract a qualified architect at this phase to help us steer in the direction we need. And that's why I'm asking and pleading for more funds.
Right. Well, you had me when you said you thought the numbers were extremely high with the other.
Yeah, I did.
So if you can pull it off, you know we support it 100%.
And I, I wouldn't have said it lightly.
Right, because you know we'll hold you to it, so.
We're doing portables everywhere, by the way.
Bob?
Well, it's, it's not really a question. Randy, you went above board on your explanation to everybody in regard to, it was like sitting in, in our last meeting, but you were very informative to the group here. I, myself, you know, when we had discussed, we discussed 100,000, and we were excited, but, you know, in, in all reality, we, we need the funds to be able to, you know, get this RFQ off the track with the architects, and like you stated, if we get five or six, even up to eight.
Absolutely.
I mean, to have those funds available. So I would like to make that amendment to bump up to 200,000. So that would make this 202,961 for this amendment at this point.
Motion's made in second. Any, Mike?
Thank you.
So John, so John, first of all, thank you, Randy, for everything you've did, but John, assuming we, we have a fund, we can move this money from into here?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Let's, appreciate you saying that. Yep, that's why you're here.
It's easy for me to say, right?
So John, sorry, yeah. Where, so when we make the amendment, do we have to be specific?
It'll come from fund balance.
All right, do we have, do we have to make that, Sheila? Do we have to be that specific?
Where, where the money is going to come from?
Because it's, you know, the resolution lays it out, just want to make sure we're consistent.
Does John have that answer now?
So, yes. The first line on this transfer, appropriated fund balance, would be 202,961. The second line, transfer to capital, would go to 202,961. The general fund transfers in line, the third line would go to 202, 202,961, and other professional fees would change to 200,000.
Right. Awesome. Thank you.
So your, your amendment reflects the numbers that John just gave us.
Absolutely.
So you guys are good, right? Yep, perfect.
Yep, thank you.
Everybody understand? Yep. All right, roll call.
We have to, oh, we vote on the amendment first.
Yeah, we need to vote on the amendment.
All in favor of the amendment? It's unanimous. Now, roll call as amended.
Counselor Ludwig.
Four.
Counselor Mangini has stepped out. Counselor Nasuda.
Four.
Mayor Nelson.
Four.
Deputy Mayor Pisner.
Four.
Counselor Russo.
Four.
Counselor Santinella.
Four.
Counselor Ungary.
Four.
Counselor Sikala, sorry.
Four.
Counselor Crisati.
Four.
Counselor Hendrickson.
Four.
Ten in favor, none against.
Thank you.
Beautiful.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Randy.
Keep in mind, don't forget, like I said, we can go back, once this becomes a formal, to get reimbursed for the studies and reimbursed for this 200 of the 71%.
Absolutely. And again, I think if, if those numbers are elevated, like you believe they are in your experience, you do what you got to do. I mean, if you, it's three new schools, if you keep within that budget, that's all you, the decision of the committee. I think you'd have full support.
And I tell you, and not to blow smoke up anybody, but I tell you, the support from you guys, the council, and the Board of Ed, and the town is just, again, it makes it, makes it easier to do what's required. I'm not fighting for, for little things, and you guys really, really have the best interests in, in, in mind for the town when you do stuff like this. Thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Randy. Thank you, John.
Thanks, John.
All right, next is item for discussion, the fire district tax collection. We have the MOU, was in our packets, and basically, we're looking to get consensus to give the town manager authorization to send this over to the fire departments and get it signed. Go ahead, John.
We're, we're on board, and we realize this may take a different form than an MOU, but something will come back to us that they all agree on, and at this point, we're just discussing, we're taking the lead at drafting, and that was kind of where we were stuck, right?
Right, this is the draft.
This will be the basis of it, and it will come back in some form. We're all fine with that.
Mr. Mayor, may I, this is just a draft, there's like blank spaces in here.
No, right, that's what I just said, this is the draft. Yeah. Mike.
So I agree, so Mayor of Town Attorney, so I, we were talking with the fire districts, they wanted a contract. This is an MOU or a contract? I want to be clear.
This is an MOU. It changed to a contract.
Because I thought that was one of the key, sorry, I know the individual's sitting in the audience, so I don't want to speak for her at all, but I thought that was one of the key points, was we needed a contract. So I don't know, as we negotiate here, just want to make sure, that's all I'm saying. I'm finally moved this forward, I think it, as we negotiate, I thought it was a contract. Go right ahead, you can have the floor, sorry.
Okay. So the mayor and I had a conversation about this, and yes, it may be a contract, it may come back as an MOU. The point was, the language, just the words on here, will serve as the basis for what ultimately the document becomes.
No, fair point.
That's what we're doing, yes.
Fair point, just want to make sure, because that was a key point, we were talking to the fire districts.
Correct.
Right. Well, there's another key point, too, and that is, this, I believe, says that, you know, the fire departments or the town have a right to terminate, and that's not, this is 10 years.
But we're authorizing that conversation to go on, we're just agreeing to take the lead in the drafting. So.
Correct.
All of this language is up for discussion, but what's going to come back to us is what we'll react to.
Yep, fair enough.
Okay, consensus? All right. So moving on, any other business proffered to come before said meeting? Seeing none. Public communication, is there anybody out there who would, ma'am, come on up?
Okay. So let me tell you again, I appreciate the work and the effort that you put in. It's monumental. But the couple of things I wanted to comment on was the, oh, Marjorie Gandassi, 31 fruit towers.
Thank you.
Yeah. Religion and prayer. The reason I brought it up was the founding fathers asked us to have a separation of church and state, so that we wouldn't, you know, pour the blood out that was done in Europe. That's the only reason I brought it up. I think there's an opportunity. I understand your, your compassion, but I think there does need to be a separation. And I guess the only other thing I wanted to say is, Mr. Russo, I appreciate you standing up, but I guess I was thinking it would be more in a government kind of way and not against a teacher. The teacher might have been better addressed for the superintendent of schools, just my thought. But I thank you very much again for your, for your time and, and listening, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yep.
How you doing tonight? My name is Tricia Wright, 66 Oakwood Street. It's been quite some time since I got to address the town council. My youngest was the part of the first graduating class of the combined schools. I am thrilled that you guys showed enthusiasm with Mr. Daigle in fixing the schools, but it's kind of the third time now that you've going to come to the town, and we combined the high schools, and we were supposed to save a whole bunch of money. And then we did a beautiful job on JFK, and now we're going to do this. So what I would like to respectfully ask is that you look at the Board of Ed meeting from last Tuesday and listen to the superintendent's presentation. Look at what Ms. Clark, and I believe Mr. White, he's new to me, I apologize, sir, if I'm getting your name wrong, and their presentation. Because what I would like you to do is to put money into the people that fill the buildings that you are fixing and that you are making better, so that we can come back and be the competitive town that we have been in the past. I have a favor that when the budget talks start and the special ed kids are addressed, the problem with the Special Education Department is not the teachers, or the staff, or the children, it's the lack of funding from our state. That is the common denominator. I please need whoever is in charge of getting us those funds to please do their job, and that when you address this problem, that's what you address. Because as a parent of a special ed student, who is now a principal of a school in Massachusetts, I took huge offense to that soundbite last summer. And I appreciate that the news spun whoever said it, I don't remember who it was, and I'm not trying to do, single anybody out, but the fact that the 78 students were blamed for the budget problem was wrong. So the common problem is the lack of funding, not the people. So I please need you to remember that. There are people behind. And special ed is a huge spectrum. It's, could be a learning disability, it could be a behavior problem, it could be a developmental problem, a physical problem. It encompasses so many things, and the autism spectrum. So you, please, I please... So you, please, I please ask you, I know some of you off the dais, and I, I don't think that you mean to sound disrespectful, but I please need you to remember that. And then just as a funny comedic side note to you guys, two weeks from today is St. Patrick's Day, when you want all those people to come and talk about that thing. So I'm just saying, you know, maybe you might want to push it to the next meeting so that maybe more people would come. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else? Seeing none. Councilman Communications, seeing, Councilman Ungary.
Sorry, I just, I didn't want to let this go. Marge, I just wanted to mention to you, I know you're coming from a good place, and so am I, but the separation of church and state, it's not in the Constitution, it's not in any amendment. It's found in a letter that Thomas Jefferson wrote to someone saying, "The government can't tell you what faith to be. The government can't tell you what church to go to." And that's all that he meant.
Is she right?
So I just wanted to set the record straight.
I don't agree, but that's what I...
Okay.
Look it up.
Thank you.
So I've got my pocket Constitution, right? So which we all should carry, and I think this is actually what we should be doing is debating the Constitution. So I'm going to read Amendment One. Congress shall make no law respecting an establishment of religion. So by saying a prayer, we're not establishing any religion, it's freedom of speech, or prohibiting the free exercise thereof. It's in the, it's in the First, it's in the First Amendment. So I just, I'm love to debate with you, but I, again, it's free speech, and to what the mayor said earlier, any counselor can say whatever they want in any, in any form they want, which is free speech. So I appreciate the debate. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Councilman Russo.
Thank you. Marjorie, I appreciate your thoughts. We're seven months into the school year, and this has been going on since September. All right, so you're right, you're absolutely right. It shouldn't have to come to me to say something. From what I understand, there's been some intervention, there's been some people involved, and it seems like they've failed. So you're right, I don't, it shouldn't have to come to me to say this in March. This should have been taken care of a long time ago.
It shouldn't even be talked about right now. It's a personnel issue.
Right. Shut it down now. Because everyone's afraid to say something, so I said it tonight.
The personnel came to us. He, he called out himself. All right, so again, this is, this is a political matter that our children should not be involved in.
I'm going to be a voice for the students that are afraid to come forward.
Period. All right.
Motion to adjourn.
Councilman Russo, are you all set?
All set, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Motion to adjourn. All in favor?